I call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, June 24th. And if my colleagues will indulge me, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance for my last meeting. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Petches, if you'd please call to roll.
Commissioner Barnes.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Darden.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
I'm sorry, Chair Darden, how could I forget? Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Rulon.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith. And Mr. Eggleston informed us that he had a conflict for a marine event this evening, so he won't be here.
Thank you. Okay, we have two sets of minutes to approve tonight, I'm sorry, one set of minutes to approve tonight, the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of June 9th. Do we have any changes or perhaps a motion?
All move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, passes six zero. That brings us to oral communication. At this point, members of the audience may address the Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city but are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. We have Lou Avra, Donald Prime, and Michael Kalp, in that order, please. Hello, Lou.
Hi, folks, I'm Lou Avra. I'm a resident of San Clemente and a former Planning Commissioner for eight years from 2005 through, what year, 2013. And perhaps this is a little premature to the folks who are here, but there's some of us former planners that are here tonight to give our best thoughts and so forth to Julia, who will be stepping down tonight from her role on the Planning Commission with the new elections. And it's very special for us because I served with Julia for six years. We worked together on the Planning Commission. And I, in my eighth year, just as in Julia's eighth year at this point, was the chairman of the Planning Commission two years ago in 13, and was not reappointed. So, folks, what's going to happen is there's some changes tonight that you'll see in a bit. But we are here tonight, Julia, to compliment you and to honor your long, your eight-year service to the city. And I think it's from a personal perspective, since we've served together with you, your core values, your ability to work together, your collaborative work, you and I worked on the Design Review Subcommittee together for, I think, four to five years. So we were together once a week, working on planning matters, four times a month, once every week, between planning and that. And it was just a delight to be with you. And it's, again, to congratulate you on the wonderful work you've done, again, your core values, your ability to collaborate. I think we all bring our core values to the Planning Commission, and we have to sometimes compromise those in the interest of either public interest or interest on what's best for the city and those kinds of things. But that's one of the real requisites of being an effective Planning Commissioner, is being able to do all those and balance those things out. And Julia, you have done that to just the greatest. And I've seen a few Planning Commission meetings in the last two years, and I hope that our friendship will remain, we'll see each other frequently in the future going forward. So again, congratulations on your eight years, and we look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you, Lou. It was an honor serving with you, and thank you so much for being here tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And also to the other Planning Commissioners, I should say, congratulations to all of you, and keep up the good work, folks, because I served with most of these folks as well. So thanks again, Julia.
Thank you, Lou. Michael?
Well, I'm not going to congratulate you, but I'm going to thank you. And I want to go back ten years, back to the day when you were on the Landmarks Task Force, and you were on there with Don Prime. And Don called me after the first meeting, and he said, "Oh, man, you're going to meet this gal that's on the Landmarks Task Force, she's really smart, and she's really, really articulate, and you're going to really like her." And I said, "Yeah, yeah, I'll meet her." He said, "No, no, you really need to have coffee with her." So about three or four weeks later, I had coffee with you, and wow, he was right. Dr. Don got it right. Julia, you're an impressive woman, you've done an amazing job in your eight years on the Planning Commission, you're a true leader. Jim Petches said last year that I qualified for the Hall of Fame, and you're right there. I'm very proud of everything that you've done over these last eight years, the way you work with your fellow commissioners, always keeping a balance and a thoughtful approach, and it's not easy to herd cats sometimes. But I want to thank you for your service, I think it's ended too soon, we don't have any control over that, but you're going out clearly on top and with grace, and thank you so much for all of your time. And I'm so glad that I've become a friend of yours over these years, and maybe I'll get to see you more.
Oh, thank you so much, Michael. You know you've always been my mentor.
And the big brother.
That, too.
Little change of order. Chair Darden, I guess that's the last time I can call you that.
You can keep calling me that in private.
Okay. I want to thank you for your-
She'll expect it.
Yes. I want to thank you for your eight years of wonderful service to the city, and especially for the thoughtful, thorough way that you have evaluated every issue and project that has come before this body. It has not gone unnoticed that you have evaluated every item that's come before you individually through the lens of the city's general plan and any applicable design guidelines, rather than through the distorted prism of some hidden political agenda. And I think there are many citizens in town who really, really appreciate that. Thank you for your honesty, your articulateness, and most of all, for just being you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Don, that was lovely. Thank you. I am embarrassed to say I have a few more cards. Karen Ahola, Brenda Miller, and, oh, Kathy Lentz.
Good evening, my name's Karen Ahola from San Clemente. I'm also here to thank Commissioner Darden for her service for eight years. I have to think that out of our town full of about 65,000 people, only probably a couple of hundred, if that really know what the Planning Commission has actually do, or the amount of work it takes to do the job well. And even less than that, it's only your very close friends, your colleagues, your family, who really know exactly what the job means to you. And as your friend, I know how seriously you have taken it, the level of integrity you've employed at all times, and I'm here to thank you, not really just as your friend, but as a citizen of San Clemente, and for that thoroughness, as Don has said. And I, too, am disappointed that somebody of your caliber and with the qualities you've brought to the table wasn't reelected, that's the way it goes, so on to more and better things, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen, that's very kind.
Well, if, I don't know if Michael told you, but I was here 24 hours early. I panicked last night, and I was here at seven, so I apologize for being slightly tardy to make up for it tonight. But Julia, I just wanted to thank you for the quality job you did as a Commissioner, and sitting next to me for two years on the dais, and the grace and dignity with which you fulfilled your role, your diligence in preparation, and the fact that your mind is, and your heart is, as young as a 19-year-old, with your ability to look at the world from a multimodal and complete streets perspective, and truly get it and nail it in every way. So, thank you very much, and from one unintended cover girl to another unintended cover girl, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenda, that's very gracious. And apparently, my spouse wishes to say something.
I'm going to go ahead and read what I wrote, because I'm not quite as quick on my feet as you are, something I really admire about you. There's always been a lot of passionate discussion about our unique village character here in San Clemente. Part of how we've been able to build and maintain it is with people of character like you. I've never been prouder of the character you've shown over the past eight years on the Planning Commission. You've been courageous, you have not been afraid to make the tough decisions, you have been kind, always respecting the applicant, the community, staff, and your fellow Planning Commissioners. You've been thoughtful, always thinking things through, and the impact that they may have. You've always been fair to a fault, looking at a decision from the viewpoint of each person involved. And you've been passionate, bringing an enthusiasm for positive and creative ideas. I've loved every minute watching you, and watching you serve and lead this community. You are an inspiration to me and to us all. Thank you.
Thank you. I know this is uncharacteristic, but I really don't know what to say. But that probably won't stop me. Thank you all so much for being here, and it is, it's true, I was not surprised that I was not returned as a Planning Commissioner. However, I think I would be less than honest if I didn't admit that as I look around town at the exciting challenges that lay ahead for all of you, that I'm a bit envious that you're going to be shouldering those in the coming months and years ahead, and I will have an opportunity to participate in that. However, I am very certain that all of you, with the very able assistance of our two new incredibly talented Commissioners, will handle those challenges very ably, and the city will be very proud of the results. I've enjoyed very much my service as a Planning Commissioner. It's been one of the most rewarding things that I have ever done. And it's been rewarding because as Planning Commissioners, we get to see the impact that we make on the built environment, which is very exciting, especially when you love the town you live in so much. For me, it's also been rewarding because of the people that I've met, and the way that they've inspired me and that I've learned from them. Michael, you inspired me in many ways at every single meeting that we shared together over those years, and I learned many things from you. I think the most important of those was that, to always remember that Design Review was about helping people through the process and not critiquing projects. And the second thing was that it was important to listen to everybody and to make sure to build consensus and work as a team. So I thank you very much for that. Don, even though you and I didn't serve concurrently, I learned a great deal from you, I learned that when I knew that we'd met the findings, and I knew that I was right to stick to my guns, and I have, and I appreciate you setting that example for me. Brenda, I loved the two years that we served together. You were a constant inspiration, your incredible passion at that time, and your sense of humor, of course, was, made it very enjoyable to sit next to you. But I think that what I've really learned from you, I've learned over the last few years as you've worked on the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. The incredible example that you've set for this community is for Commissioners, for staff, and for advocates, that the best way to get things done is to work together as a team, has just been incredible, and I think it's set a standard that I hope others will follow. As far as my fellow Commissioners who are seated up here with me tonight, Vice Chair, also known as Encyclopedia Brown, has always inspired me with his incredible command of very complex and detailed documents, such as the one that we'll be reviewing tonight. He is able to pull at the ready a reference from the local coastal plan and compare that to something in our general plan, and I'm sad to say that I'm only inspired by this, I was never able to learn from it. Bart, as an architect, you've added so much to the Commission and to Design Review, and I, at every meeting, learned something about the finer points of architecture from you. And I appreciate very much your very patient tutelage on those issues. And, Michael, I know that you've only been on the Commission a year, and we haven't had a chance to work together as long as I would have liked, but I know that you, too, will be adding to the design fabric and skill that is on the Commission, and I look forward to seeing that. Vani, you and I weren't able to serve together long either, but I know that you'll continue to be an advocate in the community, and will continue to make a difference in that way as you have in the past. And my friend, Jim Rulon, you've inspired me in many ways, but I think the two that were most important to me is your kindness, the kindness that you showed everybody, and I hope I learned from that, and your integrity. You are not afraid to stand on an issue alone when you are right, and I've always been very impressed by that. And then, staff, I don't know if the public realizes that in Jim Petches, we have a gem. Very few communities are blessed with somebody who has his level of knowledge but is able to offer the continuity of several decades' worth of service. There is nothing about San Clemente's vernacular of Spanish colonial architecture that he does not know, and whenever we're searching for, "Why did we have this added to the general plan, this specific plan, fill in the blank," Jim always knows the answer, and we are very fortunate to have him. And our staff, which is a very talented group of young people, are very talented to have him as a leader. I think one of the best things that he has done has been to create a culture of graciousness. When working with an applicant, they're very supportive, and they dig very deeply to get to the right answers and to try to help good applications move through, so the city is very lucky to have you. And Eileen, thank you so much for everything that you do to make sure that you get our words right, and we don't look stupid in the minutes. All right. So with that, John, who has also done a wonderful job in the years that I have been here, is going to introduce us to the next phase of our local coastal plan project. And, John, there are a number of people here tonight in the audience who I think are concerned about one particular issue, so if you could please just give an, answer some of the concerns that I think we can anticipate, that some of the folks from Cypress Shores have about access, and then if you could give just a quick overview for the Commissioners of what the process is going to be from tonight forward, because I think there's a little bit of confusion as to what's happening after tonight. And then, at that point, we'll open the public hearing and allow the folks who are here to speak now, rather than waiting several hours to speak at the end of our discussions, and then we'll return to your presentation.
All right. So I'm just going to first jump in and give a little background as to where we are. This is our fourth meeting with the Planning Commission, the first meeting was on April 22nd, which was a study session, and we've had a number of meetings following that, and today is our fourth meeting. Through the course of the meetings, we have incorporated a number of changes related to Planning Commission comments, Coastal Advisory comments, as well as the Coastal Commission comments that have been received throughout the review of the Planning Commission. So as a result, the latest draft provided to the Planning Commission does address all of the comments that have been received to date by the Planning Commission. And to begin with that, the staff report identified the more significant comments, editorial changes, and other things were addressed but not specifically mentioned just due to the number of changes. So to start, in Chapter Three is our Public Access and Recreation-
Hey, John, I just wanted to let you know, I put the LCP schedule on here, and it'd be kind of nice to show everybody where we are in the process, so they understand, you know, this is really kind of toward the beginning of the process, not the end of it, so.
Yeah, I can jump into the schedule now, actually, and so basically where we are now is at the Planning Commission review, so that's at the top of the schedule here. So today's June 24th. Our next step is hoping for a recommendation from the Planning Commission to proceed to the City Council. Staff will provide the latest draft to the Coastal Commission for their review and comment, which will be over the course of the next month. Following the Coastal Commission review, staff will be bringing the drafts to the City Council for their review. So we can anticipate the number of meetings that will be required by the City Council, but we're anticipating at the very least one, likely two, or more. So that will be, the schedule will have to be adjusted depending upon the number of meetings that we have with the City Council. Following that, we will submit this draft that's endorsed by the City Council to the Coastal Commission for their formal review, they'll review and provide comments. While they are reviewing it, we'll be preparing the second phase, which will be the implementation plan, so we'll be going through that. So, once the Coastal Commission does complete their review of the coastal land use plan, it will come back to the city, likely there will be some changes, we're not anticipating it being a perfect draft approved by them, and then there will be, following City Council meetings, to review, incorporate those comments. So, in moving forward to the comments provided by the Planning Commission at the last meeting, first being the Public Access section, there was some discussion, actually, when we-
John, I think actually we were going to follow a slightly different order.
Okay.
If you could address the concerns that the folks who are here from Cypress Shores have.
Absolutely.
And then we'll allow them to speak, and then we'll return to our process.
Okay. We can do that. So, we, staff received a comment from the Cypress Shore, Cypress Cove community earlier today with concern related to public access, when that would be required, and potential issues that could be as a result of some of the public access. So, the public, many of the public access policies are carried over from the previous land use plan that was approved in 1995. So we have actually reviewed those policies with the Coastal Commission to provide more clarity, because there have been instances in these private communities where there's been development that has occurred, and public access has not been required. So we wanted to make sure that we were consistent with how past projects have been reviewed and have not required coastal access. So we've provided edits to some of those policies. Probably the policy that specifically is addressing it is in PUB 46, New Development, Public Access Requirements. It's basically requiring public access should be required in proportion to the impact resulting from new development. So, as this community has been built, there's been vacant lots that have been developed, and past, the past policy provided, you know, new development debt was an increase of 10%. And so that was inconsistent with how the City, or the Coastal Commission was applying this particular policy. And so we sat down with our consultants and tried to make edits to it to be more consistent with how the Coastal Commission has been applying it, and those are the edits and the drafts that are before you today. So, and in response to the public comment that was provided, the city is not proposing to require public access through this. There are specific thresholds that establish it, and we've actually made those, a higher threshold than what was previously in place to require that. So, and a development of a lot is not going to be something that's going to trigger that, it's going to need to be something much more significant and to require something like that.
Just to add on to what John said, can you please pull up the policy we're talking about?
Sure.
Just overall, our goal of this LCP effort is to maintain the status quo and not require more stringent requirements than are already required in the coastal zone. If anything, if we can relax- If anything, if we can relax them to some degree, I think that we can achieve that because we'll have local jurisdiction and we'll have more ability to understand and reflect the community's goals in our decisions. So, that's gonna be an advantage, and I think probably better for the community than what's being done at the coastal commission at this point in time. And, for example, currently under the existing land use plan that's certified by the coastal commission, the access standards are more stringent than what we're proposing, so we're amending those in this process. And currently, in Cypress Cove and other coastal areas, there's been lots that have been developed, you know, many times that haven't required coastal access, and this particular draft is not gonna make that more stringent on people, it'll be less stringent, and it actually spells it out more clearly, which I'll have John show you. And to just give you an example, even with subdivision that occurred in the Cypress Cove area for the Cotton's Point estate area, where they divided, I think it was 16 or 17 lots, even in that case, the coastal commission did not require access. They did require an easement, but they didn't actually require access to be included with the development. So, if something like that, something that big did not trigger coastal access, clearly, single-family lots that are developed, a few vacant lots that are left, or changes to the clubhouse, and even modifications to the park, those kinds of things are not commensurate with requirement to require public access. And then, in this particular policy, we spell that out, and John, if you can kind of summarize that, please.
Yes, so this is the policy 46, or PUB 46 here, and the underlying text is what was added to provide clarity. We also eliminated policies that had the lower threshold of 10% of an increase to, you know, a lot or development to require it. So, as this new text has been added, it takes into account the community, the development that's proposed, and then the proportion of that in terms of context of what would be added and looking at the entire site as a whole. So, where you've got a private community that doesn't have any public access, and when you're just developing one lot, or doing an addition to a lot, that's not something that would be in proportion to the impact as far as requiring actual, full public access through the development, because it's just, it's a small improvement to the site. So, this is the policy that primarily relates to it.
Okay, so, to summarize, and correct me if I'm interpreting anything you've said incorrectly, the LCP will not have more stringent access requirements for the Cypress Shores, Cypress Cove area than the coastal commission currently has. They will, if anything, be less, and developments such as individual lot development will not trigger access requirements. And Jim, you gave an example of a project that was much larger than an individual lot, which did not trigger that requirement, and so it's not something that you anticipate being a concern for their community. Okay? All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions of John about this issue before we invite the public to speak? Okay.
Actually, one quick question. Does this still, does this give us some flexibility for public access if there are incremental changes over time, like, you know, one lot being converted to a duplex, no big deal, but if 40 lots are converted to duplexes, possibly there may need to be some kind of infrastructure improvement?
If it's done in a master plan sense, then I would say yes. If it's done individually, probably not, because you're not gonna reach that threshold for individual houses being developed. Say there's 20 houses left to be developed in the area. If you were to come in with a master plan that, you know, changed the context of those houses somehow, then you might look at some kind of an access requirement, a view access or some other requirement. But individually, if they develop one at a time, probably not. And technically, what we're writing here, I think I may be misstated it a little bit, isn't really more lenient than the coastal act already is, it's just a lot more clear. The text that people were reading, and I think in the first drafts, was a concern because it sounded like any kind of development, you know, you put a patio cover on the back of your house, and according to the coastal commission, that's considered development, requires coastal access. That's just not the case. So, in this update, we've made it very specific to spell out, you know, those kinds of minor development does not kick in the requirement for coastal access. So, to answer the question, yes, we will have the ability when it raises to the level of requiring coastal access is still required, which is the goal of the coastal act itself. Anyway.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment, we actually started this review for the public comment here, the first review was Beaches Parks and Rec Commission and the Coastal Advisory Committee last January, and returned to the Coastal Advisory Committee, which I also chair here about a month ago, so this is about the sixth or seventh iteration, and we've taken great care, I thought, to make sure that we did not raise the chinning bar in this area, that we were trying to whole level with the current land use plan from 1995 in this area. So, I think a lot of the work we've done in our, actually six or seven reviews of this document, have been to change a lot of the wills and shalls to shoulds and woulds and coulds, specifically to give ourselves flexibility in this area as far as we can push the envelope with the coastal commission. So, I think that's been the intent of staff and that's been the intent of this commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, we're actually not having a public hearing process tonight, however, we do invite the public to participate in tonight's proceedings. So, those of you who wish to speak, please fill out a card that's located in the back of the auditorium, and if you've filled out a card and no longer have a concern or don't feel a need to speak, just indicate that when I call your name. And when you come up to the microphone, please state your city of residence, your name, and you will have three minutes to speak. The first name on the list is John McDowell, and then I'm going to go ahead and list the next several so that if you are going to speak, please come up and line up on the side. David Westendorf, and I believe this says Michael Asaj, Asay?
Asay.
Asay.
And good evening. My name's John McDowell. I reside in Santa Ana, which is a great town, by the way. I served on the planning commission there in the 1990s, so I certainly appreciate what you folks are doing and what staff does. But I'm here tonight because I'm corporate counsel for the Cypress Cove Community Association, and the board was concerned enough about the access issue that we've just been talking about to have me come down and really listen mostly, but maybe make a few words, or say a few words. You will be hearing from board members from Cypress Cove, and you'll be hearing from people from Cypress Shore as well, and they're the ones you want to hear from, really. But, listening to the presentation just now, I've got a, the comment I would have is, as I looked at the draft, the June 4 draft, what I think was of the most concern was PUB 48, which specifically talks about Cypress Shore, and says, "Any new development proposed by the private community is listed below, shall be required to provide an irrevocable offer of dedication for the vertical access." And I think the concern was, not only what if a lot is developed, what if there is a remodel on a lot that's already improved, what if either of the two associations choose to remodel the clubhouse, which happens from time to time? Are those things gonna trigger the vertical access requirement? And that would really be a concern, and the people who live there are gonna be talking to you about why that would be a concern and why the vertical access would be worrisome. But, from the lawyer's standpoint, looking at documents and reading language, that's the concern that jumped out at me. So, I appreciate the comments, and I appreciate the assurances that there's no intent here to expand what exists, but I'll defer to the San Clemente folks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Westendorf?
I would like to first of all, Mr. Westendorf speaking, and I'll follow him.
That's fine. If you'd queue up, though, on the side, just to, for efficiency's sake.
Can you show up this time?
Yeah. And then, after-
It's 49 now, John.
After Mr. Westendorf will be Jim Walsh.
And for the public record, it's actually PUB 49 in our current draft, just to get everybody up to speed.
Okay, yeah, I'm Michael Asay, I'm a board member with the Cypress Shores Community Association, obviously live in San Clemente. These comments are for the record, and they represent the official views of our community. The community is one of three communities which shares the Cypress Shores private beach, a total of approximately 1,200 residents and their guests who have access to and use this beach. Since its founding in 1962, Cypress Shores HOA has built and maintained private streets which serve the community, and it alone developed the railroad underpass at its expense for safe passage to the beach, and that underpass today would cost several million dollars to build. Main road access to the three communities and to the beach is along Las Palmeras entrance, which is a private, a narrow road with no sidewalks. This is the only connection from the community to a public road, that road being Del Presidente, wedged between the community and the I-5 freeway. There's limited parking on this road, and the community itself has been completely subdivided and built out except for three non-contiguous lots. We're very unclear from the draft LCP what the proposed public access requirements are or could be for the private communities, and we, of course, oppose any requirement that an access be given across our private development streets. Aside from expropriating the streets and the underpass, no access could be completed without confiscation of property of individual homes that are already built. And even, as noted above, the Las Palmas entrance is not wide enough for a walkway unless possibly in the extreme, the 50-year-old palm trees which line the street are removed and the street is realigned. We're therefore confused as to why our community's been specifically named in the LCP as a candidate for Pacific, for a public access route. This inclusion seems to be predicated on the demand that any new development or redevelopment between the public street and the water provide an offer of public easement for the property, across the property for 21 years. If this requirement is to apply to individuals, which I know you guys now have said apparently that's not, but it's not clear from this, on this draft, believe me, how these properties are to be linked together without traversing the HOA private property and streets. If the requirement is to apply to the association properties, please note that Cypress Shores does not own property from the water to the public street, Del Presidente. Las Palmeras entrance is owned by a different association, Cypress Shores merely has an easement to cross. Finally, we note that the beach is already accessed to and across by the public on both ends, from the state park on the north, from Tressles on the south, so there's no need for another access route, especially when the new traverse beat to the beach might be much shorter, might not be much shorter in any event. In conclusion, since there's no reasonable way or need for the public access across our community, we're opposed to its inclusion in the list of private communities subject to the special conditions in the study, special conditions and study, and request that it be removed from the listing in the LCP, the public sections, the 47, the 48 that was mentioned here, and 57 as well. Additionally, we request that the demand for public access offered as a condition of building permit on individual properties be removed, apparently it's not relevant, but if the LCP was meant to apply to individual properties, if the LCP is meant to apply only to HOA properties, please clarify this, and whether the stated conditions are meant to trigger public access easements across property that is not owned by the association. You know, failure to clarify the LCP in these areas will in itself have substantial negative impact on property prices in our community, as kind of witnessed by the number of people that we have here from our community today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the run over.
That's fine, no problem. Mr. Westendorf, followed by Jim Walsh, followed by, and Alex, I'm going to get it right today. It's Alex Maniscalco. I had it spelled phonetically this time, so I wouldn't embarrass myself. All right, so, Mr. Westendorf?
Thank you very much, thank you for the opportunity to make a presentation tonight. My name is Dave Westendorf, and I'm president of the Cypress Cove Community Association. And I'm here representing myself as a 30-year homeowner and resident of Cypress Cove, as well as a president of our homeowners association. We are against the local coastal plan as it is currently written, and stand in solid opposition to public beach access through Cypress Shore. In support of our neighbors, the Cypress Shore Association, with whom we share recreational facilities, including their beach access, their park, and their clubhouse, and they in turn have access to our clubhouse, as well as our tennis courts and swimming pool. There are several reasons that we're opposed. Cypress Cove and Cypress Shores are private communities with privately maintained streets and security and residential facilities. The LCP as written is vague as to what constitutes new development. Both communities are essentially built out, and no new, no further development on a master plan basis is possible. For the purpose of this discussion, we are interpreting the reference to new development in the LCP in the most conservative fashion to mean that if a new home is built on one of our three existing unimproved lots, or one of three that also exist in the shores, that that constitutes new development and will trigger the public access process. In addition, if someone wants to add a second story and a remodel, that constitutes new development and will also trigger the public access process. Our communities are private, and in addition to individual property rights conveyed with our homes, we also have property rights collectively through our community associations. We are not about to abrogate those rights. From a practical standpoint, as Mike has already stated, Avenida Palma, Palmeras entrance to Cypress Cove is a narrow street, and it's between two block walls which are enhanced by 50-year-old palm trees, very tall trees, and there's really no room for pedestrian access to be built. In order to comply with the 10-foot easement for a sidewalk, the palm trees would have to be torn out, and private homes on already tiny lots inside the walls would have to be condemned in order for a sidewalk to be built. Imminent domain proceedings would be extremely disruptive and cost the city many millions of dollars, serving absolutely no practical purpose. In addition, the public already has lateral access to the private beach area below the mean-high tideline. The distance from the San Clemente State Beach at Calafia on the north end of the private beach is one-third of a mile of, I'm sorry, let me go over this again. The distance from the San Clemente State Beach at Calafia to the north end of the private beach is one-third of a mile. And from the south end at Tressles, the private beach is adjacent to the public access. The distance from Del Presidente to the shore beach access, the entrance, the Del Presidente entrance to Cypress Shore, to their beach access is approximately a third of a mile. Since parking is not allowed on Del Presidente and the distance from there is public lot-
Mr. Westendorf, if you could wrap up, please.
Could I finish it, one second, please? This is my last point. The distance is 3/4 of a mile from the nearest public access, parking access point, to the beach, and to us, it makes no physical sense to grant access through Cypress Shore to the beach, as the distance is greater than that, than that access that's already made available from either end of the beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Jim Walsh, please, and then Mr. Maniscalco, and then Bob Adams, please.
Good evening, my name is Jim Walsh, I'm a 40-year resident of San Clemente, and I am a 40-year resident of Cypress Shores. And I'm, obviously, I think Mike Asay spoke for our board, and I'm here tonight to say that I will volunteer, anything, any kind of information, or if you need any input, I would be glad to help out, and I just wanted to throw my name in there and let you know, I'm old and I'm retired, and so I have the time, and I would be glad to assist in any way I possibly can. Obviously, as a president of Cypress Shores Community Association, I am against the public access, but I think I have a lot of history, I certainly have been there since the very beginning, almost of Cypress Shores, and so, again, I'm volunteering my time. If you need me, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Alex? Then Bob Adams, and then Steve, I believe it's Lang?
Madam Chair and Honorable Commissioners, I am Alex Maniscalco, attorney on behalf of Capistrano Shores, Inc. First, we appreciate City Attorney Scott Smith and Mal Richardson's consideration and pragmatic approach toward our clients' concerns, and working with us to respond substantively, and also Jim Petjes's consideration is same, even though we don't have direct contact with Jim. As a housekeeping matter, we have to incorporate our correspondence from the June 9 meeting, which was attached as attachment 11, in full, as though we resubmit it again tonight, and without waiving- without waiving the concerns and arguments therein. Specifically responding to the proposed memorandum provided by City Attorney Smith, we request that the proposed language in a master coastal development permit or de minimis waiver covering the park be revised to not be a language, a word of limitation, but example, like such as with a master CDP, to allow the city more flexibility, because we really don't know what the process would look like, what coastal's feedback would be. We were thinking that a master CDP may be able to accomplish the goals, reconcile the conflicts that we've brought up, but we were hoping that just a slightly more open word could be chosen. We appreciate the city's consideration of an overlay regarding preservation of Capistrano Shores Mobile Home Park. It assures, to assure the city that there's no intention of future change, to acknowledge that as a mobile home park, it has personal property instead of real property for homes, and those are, that's unique, and involves unique areas of state and federal law. And also, the city's attempt to preserve the non-formal use ordinance amendment that was specifically adopted to deal with this, this conflict of state law, you know, allowing repair and replacements under Title 25 under state law, without a fair taking or a necessary burdensome exactions. And we appreciate that, and it all stems back to Capistrano Shores' original concern about the downzoning, and we appreciate that concern, that work to reconcile and avoid injury, ameliorate it. I understand the city's cautious with revising language, and that's why, specifically cautious with revising language that may have been provided by coastal, and that's specifically why City Attorney Smith is suggesting kind of a punt to this master permit process. And we understand the city's concerned, it doesn't want to make a promise it can't keep, and we appreciate that candor. Because of that, it does leave stuff open, and that's the only reason why we have to retain our concerns, because we don't know exactly what that process will look like or where it would end up. We hope that as, the city would work with us and would be open to further revision or further comment back on the LCP, specifically before City Council regarding these items. So we have to reserve right on LU 99, Capistrano Shores area, et cetera. And lastly, we have, there are two comments we've punted. We believe CSI should be grouped with North Beach on page, table 3-1, page 326, and in that section, we think it makes an arbitrary distinction, because they're basically our neighbor, we share same intersection, we're in the same photos. Doesn't make any sense, except to create some sort of arbitrary distinction for an access inventory, and that's concerning, we don't know why it would be there. We appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Bob Adams, Steve Lang, and then, I hope I get this right, I think it says Trow-Arth Streets.
Hi.
Hi, Bob.
Good evening. Hi, how are you doing? Anyway, I'm Bob Adams. I've been a resident in San Clemente for 40 years. I've been a resident of Cypress Shore for 35 years. And I've been on the board many times in Cypress Shore over those 35 years, in and out of it. First of all, I think that this, the beach trail that the city put in is a marvelous, well-used asset to the city and to the whole community to get to the access and be along the beach. My wife and I use it on a regular basis. It's a great beach. I, myself personally, if it goes all the way to Tressles is not a problem. First of all, it's owned, that land that you're looking at is owned by the railroad, not by us, and you have a buffer. What I am opposed to is trying to put access down through the middle of the private community that, we have dealt with Coastal Commission twice, where they wanted access, when we did the major deck improvement on the clubhouse, and when we went to get approval for putting the remodel of the clubhouse. We won both times, they backed off. We don't own those streets. They're publicly, publicly, not public streets, any of them. Like they, like they said earlier, the one main one from El Del Presidente down is owned by another community, and we only have an access right of ingress and egress, and then the others are owned by the community. I have stock certificates showing where I own a portion of all of those streets. They're all private streets. But you don't need it particularly, and I'd like to see it completely removed, you know, from the, from your proposal, because you do have access through the state beach, not only at Calafia, but when you do approve that whole thing, you'll go through the state beach, and then you have Tressles. So you have plenty of access, and that access between those two places is greater than the other accesses you have now on the trail between, you know, what, Calafia and 502, I think it is, or 205, you know, the different accesses. So it's not nearly necessary, and I think, I think if we go against the Coastal Commission for the third time, we'll win, just as we did on the first two times. So I'm against the wording at all. I'd like to see it gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Steve Lang?
Thank you. I'm with them. And we, if I understand correctly, you are not proposing, staff has not proposed that there's going to be public access allowed through Cypress Shore, and that the committee is, it's not a problem or issue, is that correct? I also understand that there is some fear in the verbiage, the way that it's stated now, that it's not clear specifically. So can we get those two things fixed, and I'll go home? So there's not going to be a problem, and if we get the verbiage fixed, and we're happy, then we, bless you, thank you, we'd like to shower you with accolades for your great job. Okay.
Okay, so, next was what I read as Trow-Arth Streets, then Cheryl Moe, and then Tom Stringer.
Tracy's Streets is not here.
Oh, Tracy, sorry, Tracy. Okay. Cheryl Moe, Cheryl? And after Cheryl, Tom Stringer, and then Scott Leishman. And if either of those people are here, if you line up behind Cheryl so that we can be efficient.
Good evening, planning commissioners and staff. I earlier sent in some comments to Section 4, and I also wanted to say I really appreciated the language that was added to Page 1.4 about any valid California development permits that were granted prior will remain in full force and effect. I'm concerned that there might not be enough clarity in that, so in the documents that I provided, I listed some ideas that I had to provide some additional clarity there, particularly in response to the residential 3. And in that, when you talk about different minimum buffers, I think it's really important to break out buffers that are in canyons that are really city drainage. It's, the 100-foot buffer's really important when you're in front of it, like in Esche, Bosachica, or San Diego, or Bodega Bay, but our canyons are virtually stormwater runoff constantly, and really should be put in pipes. I have some other documents I'll send you another time, on watersheds. This is a watershed document that came out of the stormwater local plan. This shows your two main watersheds, and the coastal canyons is a very small part of it. It has new, no blue lines in it, so it's not stream quality in that. You can see in your water runoff plan where the catch basins are water dumping into these canyons. When you look through your land use, there are some canyons that have some open space, but most of them are zone residential properties. When you look at Figure 4.1, there are canyons and watersheds that are not shown on this. The two main ones down at Cypress Cove, there are canyons that are shown with some blue lines that are not delineated as to what they are. I believe those are stormpipes, and so the ones that don't have stormpipes, all of a sudden now have an added burden of having waterways, and that really needs to be addressed separately, so that those properties are not encumbered. So I thank you for your work.
Thank you, Cheryl. Next, Tom Stringer.
Good evening. My name's Tom Stringer. Hate to admit it, but I moved into San Clemente in 1972. I've been a resident at Cypress Shore for 20 years, and I'm much younger than our president here, Jim Walsh. Yes. I wanted to thank the commission for your analysis and your statement regarding keeping the status quo at Cypress Shore, and it is something that we're all very concerned with, everybody that is here. I've been on the board for 18 years, and I think the crux of the whole issue is that there is access on both sides of Cypress Shore, and it's easier and quicker to get from those parking spots to the ocean than try to go through Cypress Shore. So again, I want to thank you again for your analysis and your statement that the status quo is going to be maintained. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Scott Leishman, then Daniel Hancock, and Bill Bemis.
I'm Scott, and my comments have been expressed already. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Mr. Hancock? And then Bill Bemis and Richard Hahn.
I'm Bill Bemis.
Okay. Come on up, Mr. Bemis.
I'm Bill Bemis. I've lived here for almost 30 years, 28, I think. Resident of the shores since 2000, and I am glad to hear that everything's fine, but what I read, and I love digital technology, but unfortunately in a meeting, I can't read, so I'm not reassured, I can't see what's on these screens, but I hope that we can clarify the language, because I was shocked and dismayed that this was even a possibility, that public access was going to be coming through our private community, and I've been very, I've been just upset since I heard about, I was kind of blindsided by it. So hopefully, the language can be clarified, and we really don't have anything to worry about. So, thank you. Thank you all for your service. I know you do it for the huge dollars that you get paid, and I appreciate it. So I just wanted to say that tonight I heard probably not, not more lenient, more clear, but can we clarify it in the language, if we're going to have the language, or else just get rid of it? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Richard Hahn, and then the last card I have is from Gordon May, I believe. If those two gentlemen would step up if they wish to speak, and if anybody else wishes to speak, if you could submit a card at this time.
Hi, it's Richard Hahn. I'd like to defer, I might, and I've already been expressed.
Okay, thank you, sir. And are you-
Good evening, Gordon May. It's my turn.
Yes, sir.
I'm a resident of Cypress Shore since 2002, former member of the board. I'm speaking as a father, as a community member. There is a element of safety. I have two young daughters. Most of the people in this audience that live there either have young children in the shores now, in the Cove now, or grandchildren that are there all the time. We look out for each other, we know who's supposed to be there, we know who's not, and that element of safety. We also have a freeway running by our house, it has 250,000 cars a day. Public access means public access. That means anybody, if it's open, can come through there. I grew up with Elizabeth Smart's father and brother, and I don't want anything to happen to any of our kids. There are 21 kids on Kai Isabelle alone under the age of 12. In the whole shores community, there's probably 400 kids under the age of 12. We don't want the public to access through our community for the safety reason. It's imperative that we maintain the status quo for that reason. There's no need for the public to come through there when there are alternative routes, and I want you to look beyond the coastal idea of access to the beach, which everyone has in San Clemente, to the factor of safety for our community, safety for our children. That's a huge reason why so many of us are so against this even being a possibility. And so that's, as a father speaking, and as a homeowner and a resident, looking at the documents, because I'm also a real estate litigator, I see a reference to any improvement on a house by greater than 10% still in the document in Section PUB 49, as an element that might trigger the coastal access, and that certainly is not in harmony with what I heard today. So that would need to be clarified and removed if that's in, if your plan's going to be consistent with. Love that red line. Thank you, sir. Okay. That answers that question. Thank you for your time.
Such a powerful pen. All right. Thank you, Mr. May.
It was already red on there.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening regarding the local coastal plan? Okay.
Could I make a request, just standing right here?
If you could come up to the microphone, because otherwise people at home can't hear.
My name's Dave Westendorf again. One thing that we would like to request, and one thing that we think we missed out on from the initial time that you began this process with this local coastal plan, is we were never informed, either the shores or the Cove, and we heard about it in a roundabout way, and kind of responded on an emergency basis. Could we be kept apprised of what most of the recent language and changes are as you proceed with this, mailed to our association and to the Shores Association?
If you provide staff with the contact information of those people.
We'll do that, okay. Thank you, we'll do that.
Thank you. Okay, so seeing no one else stepping forward and seeing no more cards, we will close the public commentary portion of this evening. Jim, would you, would you care to, we'll give a moment for the room to clear.
Thanks for being on the show.
Thank you.
There they all go.
Thank you very much.
You want to address it? Okay. Okay. Okay, as the, as the room clears, Jim, there were a number of questions brought up. Could you address some of those, and then I know Scott has some issues that he could clarify? And most of the questions seem to be around PUB 49 and what they felt was unclear language.
Well, one thing that, I guess, you know, people coming to this new, don't know the history of the, both the coastal act and the existing certified LUP. Most of this language that's here, that's, people are finding objectionable, is current language in the code. So if they're happy with the status quo, this is probably working for them, but nonetheless, I think that we understand and we felt that it was unclear, and early on, even though the Cypress Cove people weren't commenting on this, other people had the same concern. So we purposely modified the language, and if you look under PUB 46, that's kind of the first policy you look at, which says if these things happen, then you look at these other policies. So in order to even get to PUB 49, you go through the new development public access, and what we did there was we provided, you know, the statement in proportion to the impacts resulting from new development, so that you're not requiring access for a minor development like a new house or a new clubhouse. And I know that those, and Bob Adams mentioned, that those projects, you know, maybe the Coastal Commission tried to push for it at first, but in the end, they didn't require it. I, you know, as we've gone through this process, we've got a lot of comments from different people in the public, and we're still, you know, this process isn't over, and we're willing to, you know, look at it some more and see if there's anything else we can help to clarify. But the amendments we've made specifically to date have been made to try and address this issue that not all development kicks in this requirement. And then the one gentleman that had commented that he was concerned about the 10% trigger in PUB 50, that is part of this discussion has been eliminated altogether as a policy. So, anyway, we're continuing to try and refine this. These things that specifically, you know, include some of the private community's names and call them out by name, frankly, isn't something that we proposed, it was something that the Coastal Commission put in there originally back in the late 80s, and it just kind of stayed in the, in the document to the, to this day. So that's why they're there.
Okay. And Scott, before you, before you address this, Jim, is it, or perhaps John, is it possible to schedule a meeting with the folks from Cypress Shore and help walk them through some of those issues?
Certainly.
Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioners, good to be here, and congratulations on all the work you've done on this today. I'm coming late to it. The concern raised tonight was raised in other comments, including a comment by Capistrano Shores. They're Romanet Number 2. They're Romanet Number Two. And those owners didn't want to be in this movie either. The main concern, Jim's already, I think, spoken to, and you've raised in your meetings previously. And it's that there needed to be assurance, well, the commenters are asking for assurances that this program isn't designed to upset the status quo, and that it's intended to honor the Supreme Court doctrine in the Nolan and Dolan cases, that require that exactions and conditions be of the type relating to the impact, and also of the proportion relating to the impact. And Jim summarized that to us really well a minute ago. There is text back in here about proportionality. There are kind of two ways for the commission and the city ultimately to address this. One is by anticipating permit by permit, breakfast nook by patio, what you mean by proportionality. The other is to restate the test. By the way, the test is in the Coastal Act itself and in the Nolan-Dolan decisions. I know you're familiar with those. So that was one of the issues that we'd flagged in our memo. Number three, the Coastal Act and U.S. Supreme Court case law require that exactions and conditions on development correspond to the proportional impact of development to which they attach. And I think that's what you've heard tonight from these owners. Your option would be to try to address that very specifically in percentages and square footage, or to ask us to restate those tests in greater detail. I don't think that's conceding anything. I think the current plan and the commission regulations in effect now, of course, intend to honor that section of the Coastal Act and those Supreme Court decisions. And one proposal we had was to spell that out with greater specificity in the neighborhood of PUB46 or 49.
So you're intending then to provide language, according to your memo that I received at 5:00 this afternoon, to expand proportionality on the Nolan-Dolan case?
I could give you that text now if you'd like, Commissioner.
So where have you been? Why are you here now? Why weren't you here a month ago before, I don't know, 6:00 or 7:00?
I wish I'd been consulted on this issue a month ago. So it's been raised in comments. If the commission desires to address those comments, I'm here to help.
Yeah, we'll do that. Thank you.
Could you share the language that?
Sure. It, I summarized it a minute ago. The text could read something like this. And I would put it in PUB46, where we already talk about proportionality. Exactions and conditions on development shall be subject to one, Section 3100 of the Coastal Act, which provides, "The legislature hereby finds and declares that this division is not intended and shall not be construed as authorizing the commission or local government acting pursuant to this division to exercise their power to grant or deny a permit in a manner which will take or damage private property for public use." This is in Mr. Mescausko's comments. I'll help you find this text in a second if you want me to. I'm sorry. Or local government acting pursuant to this division to exercise their power to grant or deny a permit in a manner which will take or damage private property for public use without the payment of just compensation therefore. This is, again, from that section of the Act. This section is not intended to increase or decrease the rights of any owner or property under the Constitution of the State of California or the Constitution of the United States. And then I would add also reference to reasonable justification and proportionality under the U.S. Supreme Court's Nolan-Dolan doctrine.
You're proposing that language to be added into PUB49?
I would add that to PUB46. And I think that addresses the concern, at least conceptually.
So you're going to go away and come back in writing and present it to the commission at a later date when it's all clear, so we can evaluate it?
If you want to review that. The other thing to do would be to authorize me to make that specific recommendation in the council draft. It's up to the commission to decide.
I'm very concerned and reticent about doing that. You just read a lot of stuff to me, and I'm listening very intently, but I like to see it in black and white before I approve it to the council.
I don't blame you for that, and that's certainly an option in your priority.
Is there interest among the other commissioners in seeing that and being able to evaluate that in writing? Michael?
I have a question about it. Yeah, I think, I think this is far too open-ended. And, you know, if I was a homeowner here, I wouldn't know if this was a snow job or protection. And I would ask myself, what the heck does new development really mean? It's not very clear. It's not stated here. It's vague. Does that mean a patio? Probably not. Does that mean a new house on an empty lot? Well, maybe, maybe not. Who knows? What if it's something else? What if it's five homes get knocked down and they put a big beach club in? Is that new development? Does this mean that at no time whatsoever, this could not be affected in those neighborhoods? That's the question I ask. Does this ensure that no matter what they do and what they develop in those particular neighborhoods would not trigger this requirement?
Absolutely not. What we're charged in doing is enforcing the Coastal Act. We're taking a mini version of what the Coastal Act says and applying it to San Clemente the best we can, to our own specific parameters. We can't erase the Coastal Act, because clearly, the Coastal Act, one of its main charges is to provide public access. So as soon as a development reaches to a level that is proportionally, you know, beyond what the Nolan-Dolan case tells us, then we may very well have to, per the Coastal Act, put that exactionation, exact nation on a particular property, either in the form of an actual access or a potential easement for a future access. So that can happen. And, you know, we're not saying that we're going to do something contrary to the Coastal Act. We won't get our LCP approved if we try to. So, you know, keep in mind here that it's, we're not, we're not actually dictating what's happening here. The Coastal Act is. But we are trying to do, what we are trying to do is to make it clear that what we're taking on as our LCP isn't more restrictive than what the Coastal Commission currently applies. So that's, that's the line we're trying to draw. We can't really get into the specificity that I think you're asking for. You know, like, it applies to, it won't apply for a patio cover, it won't apply for a single-family house, it won't apply for five single-family houses. You know, every case is different. The circumstances may be different. You know, a single-family house could be a, you know, 100,000-square-foot mansion, taking up acres and acres of land. I, you know, it depends on the scale of proportionality.
Would that trigger it?
I don't know. Each, it's like, that is impossible to answer. If you want that kind of specificity, you're not going to be able to get it. It's just, the Coastal Act isn't that clear. So for us to make it more specific than the Coastal Act is not going to be something that we can do. We can do, we can try, and that's what we are trying to do. We're trying to make it as specific as possible, to make it clear that it doesn't, clearly, a single-family house and an existing subdivided lot isn't something that's going to trigger it. But once you go beyond that, I don't know if we can really define whether or not it is, or will the Coastal Commission likely allow us to do that kind of a definition.
Yeah, it's tough that we even have to put this in because of all of that. But I sense surreal uneasiness by the people who are living in these communities that aren't really buying into this. They're kind of thinking, well, maybe we, maybe we're hearing it, maybe we're not. So I think we ought to take a look at putting in some language in here that could make people feel better about that, and don't make it so iffy and vague. I think that'll go a long way, make everybody happy.
Don?
Yeah, PUB59, I think, which was the other, other one that they were concerned about, the access management program, that cited, one of the, the reference sightings in is IX13, which actually comes out of the existing approved land use plan from 1995 or '88, as amended in 1995. So this has just been lifted over, because it's still part of the Coastal Act. And so I see where the neighborhood's concerns are, but I was looking for the same trigger in PUB49. I didn't see it, but PUB46 does come from the current approved, it's been approved by 20 years, IX15. So there's a hook there that says, this has lasted a long time. I see where we're trying to put a proportion statement in. I'm not sure, does PUB49 have any linkage back to the existing land use plan, John or Jim? I didn't see a Roman numeral calling it out, although I think I remember seeing it for quite a number of times.
I think it was part of it, but it doesn't have the reference.
There's a reference that would be useful. The city attorney makes a good point. I'll give you a global comment, rather than address, you know, Michael Smith's issue about whether it's a patio cover or not. That's great. I just wish you had been here about two months ago. And I'm not smiling. So I've read this thing about five times, and I think you make a good point. And these people have a timeline to try to get to the city council, and I'm ready, and I see in your letter, we've got, wordage will be provided. We recommend further review. We can provide text. Well, we want to see it before we certify it for the city council. I'm very reticent about that. And I don't want to upset the staff's timeline here. I think you have valuable input. Welcome to the party. Okay, enough. I think, what I thought he said, Michael, was a global comment that would protect him, because we cannot fillet everything to whether this patio cover, you know, stands or not. So we're in a quandrum here. Language has been in, in the land use plan for over 20 years, that now has suddenly become, you know, the local Cypress shores have become aware of, and we have to step forward carefully. And I think the law, we should craft those words very carefully for consideration and not do it on the fly.
I totally agree with that.
There's the old saying, when you want it real bad, sometimes that's the way you get it, real bad. And I don't want this real bad. I want it right.
Jim?
I just wanted, I understand Commissioner Brown's concern about what seems to be kind of a late hour informational thing by our city attorney. But I thought we made it clear, maybe that's, if anybody is to blame, it's me. We have been working with Capistrano Shores all along in trying to come up with some language that's hopefully going to help us with some other issues that we're dealing with Capistrano Shores in a current litigation. And that the attorneys were going to come in with some future language to try and address some of those issues. And that's what we've done. We've done our best job at working with Capistrano Shores to come up with a language that doesn't compromise the Coastal Act, doesn't compromise city goals. And that's why Scott is here tonight, is to present those things that they've worked out. And it's just taken a long time to work those out. We were hoping that would happen sooner, but it just, you know, because of time, it's taken as long as it has. So anyway, I apologize if, Don, if this seems to be a late hour hit of information.
This is the stack from Capistrano Shores that was presented to us at the last meeting, not before, not three days before, not five days before, to actually study it. I've read it since then. And this stack probably now exceeds over eight or nine inches from Capistrano Shores or the whole general plan for the last four or five years. And so to properly evaluate this going forward, you know, to get legal input at the meeting is not satisfactory. It is unsatisfactory. It is not proper for you lawyers to come in to this body at 6:59 in the evening, or two hours prior with a letter that I will provide you comment before or later at a later date. You come, you stand, you deliver, you present, so that we can evaluate and do our job that the city council's appointed us to do, to do the lifting. And so this is not correct. I want to vote on a local use, land use plan that Mr. Champ has been working on for a year, Mr. Petches has been working on his whole career, that we can go forward to the city council and goes for the third iteration with this Coastal Commission, that we can stand behind. That's what, that's what we're appointed to do.
Well.
And so I'm not really happy with the lawyer-esque in this entire process. Thank you.
Don, I understand your, your concerns about how we got here. As far as how we move ahead, Don has expressed a desire to make sure we see this in writing before this goes to the city council. And I see everybody nodding. So it looks like that's the commission's pleasure. So we'll need to do that before it goes to council.
Madam Chair, I don't want to argue. The bullet train schedule that you're on, I don't think personally, and I'll get this on record, because I want you to know, Commissioner Brown, it didn't acknowledge the complexity of the issues or the stakes in the litigation that Mr. Petches mentioned. And so I apologize that he came in at the last minute. But the dates, when you consider that your agenda published last week, the time left between your last meeting and your last deliberations, and my ability to respond, I thought, I agree, was much too tight, given the complexity of the issue and the stakes. So I apologize for that, but I didn't set the schedule that you're working against.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Okay.
I have one more.
Oh, yes, Michael, I'm sorry.
Sorry, one more question here. You know, I've, I've been taken in position on this to make it simple, make it understandable, and why is it so complicated that I don't even understand it? And I think part of this document is, it's written so technically, that it gives you the feeling that you are getting legalese by attorneys that could hit you in the head when you're not looking. And if I could say anything to this process, it's to make it more simple rather than more difficult. And if it's truly meant to be better, Jim, which you say, then great. Make it sound like it's better. This doesn't sound so hot to me. For example, explain PUB46 to me. What's the intent of that section?
So I think PUB46, and just kind of summarizing what the policy is, is that it's looking at new developments, which are between the first public, the ocean and the first public road. So look at those developments, and if the development is in proportion to the impact resulting from the new development, as in, it's significant enough that it warrants public access through there, then that's, that's something that will need to be, that public access will be required. And then it identifies additional things that should be provided.
Okay, you guys changed the text on that. Would you go further into the text? Because there's, there's another area in here that I was really trying to point out.
Which policy would you like me to go to?
49.
And just to add to what I said, is that this is the first policy that's looked at. If, after this policy.
Yeah, it's 59, actually.
Okay. If after this policy is reviewed and it's determined that public access is not required due to the proportion of the development, then the other policies related to requiring public access are not going to be applicable. If this does apply, then you look to these other policies.
I'm sorry, I meant 59.
But just, what you make is, the way you expressed it was very clear with PUB49. Some text to that effect might be useful here, basically saying, you know, if PUB46 does not apply, then the following policies do not apply as well.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that would create, that would clear up a lot of confusion.
I had you explaining the wrong chunk. I want you to look at PUB49, because all of a sudden, that seems to open up a can of worms for me again. So help me understand that.
So this is an access management plan? So it's when public access is required, these are, it identifies certain things that need to be provided, like establishing hours of public access, providing bike racks. So these types of things are needed to be looked at and evaluated and provided?
So the operative words for this would be, when, when, when development in one of these private communities is required to dedicate or offer to dedicate public access?
Which seems to me to be a trigger word, especially when you're naming the same neighborhoods again. And it sort of says, well, this isn't going to happen. But when it does, this is what's going to happen, and we're going to have public access. So, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to look at a clarity thing. I'm kind of giving a gut reaction to the language that I find difficult. I've read lots of difficult language in my life. But clearly, the people who come today and living in these neighborhoods, they're not dumb. They're going to read this stuff and go, you know, I don't know if the door's still open or what. So this, to me, adds that complexity, because it says when we're going to do this.
Perhaps, perhaps it would be helpful if this sentence were flipped in a way that would be similar to what Jim suggested for PUB46, where, you know, we, it states upfront that this, this only applies to those situations where. that this, uh, it, this only applies to those situations where public access, um, has been determined necessary, rather than bearing it as a separate clause. Because I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean exactly what Jim said, but in the spirit of what Jim said.
The spirit. To me, the language is quite clear that you only have to have this plan when it triggers. So, I was kind of fine with 59, but that's, that's simpler clarity and I could support that.
And I think we're hearing from the public, they're confused. And I think, I, I think, you know, as far as an issue of maintaining their trust, I don't think that would hurt.
Yeah, and I think that your suggestion that we meet directly with their, you know, community leaders and even sit down with Scott, and I think Scott's additions are going to help probably resolve their issue mostly.
Madam Chair-
And then those clarifications too would help understand that these things don't apply if you don't get through the first, you know, hurdle of whether it meets this, you know, the, the trigger point.
Yeah. You don't even need to read 59 if, if 46 doesn't apply to you.
I was just going to say, the qualifying language we can format so that it does apply to the entire section.
And, John, this may just be a typo, but, or I'm reading it wrong, but for PUB 59, I just noticed it said for the private beach area north of Capistrano Shores and the Capistrano Shores, Ladera, Cypress Shores, et cetera. Did you mean to repeat that like that?
I don't think so.
Where, I'm sorry, where is that?
This is in the first sentence of PUB 59?
Oh, it's the, yeah, it's the second-
Correct, yes.
-line.
There's almost like, and the Capistrano Shores, Ladera, blah, blah, blah. It looks like maybe you, something needed to be added there, but anyway.
I'll, I'll check. I, I would prefer to just say for private communities and not name specific communities. What if they changed their names, you know, then, you know? One way to get out of it is just change your name. It doesn't apply to you? I don't, it doesn't make sense. So, I think it'd be, it should be more generic. If we can get away with it, I, you know, I don't remember, this is even before my time when this stuff was written. So, I don't know why they wanted to name specific communities at that time.
Yeah, this sounds like a good idea.
Some other item that was discussed, it was said that the coastal commission required the names of the developments on, in a couple of the sections, correct?
Yeah, these are all remnants, these are all remnants from past coastal commission direction.
One of the recent reviews.
I don't, has that happened? I don't think so.
I thought I heard that earlier this evening.
Nothing that I can recall.
Okay.
But they've provided comments to say.
I, I think it would probably go a long way with the, with communities that are feeling singled out if, if we didn't utilize their names specifically as long as that's acceptable.
I think those are all the private communities in the coastal zone, but we don't need to, you know, single them out by name and obviously-
Well, or if we do single them out at the beginning of the passage or of the section and then not just repeating them throughout.
Then possibly we'd need to address the language in PUB 49 also, which calls them out.
You could take the word when out of 59 and use another word. Because that, that's the word that triggers me. It's kind of makes it like it's going to happen for sure, shall be prepared when development. You know, it sort of stays like, oh, it's going to come along and then we're going to do this.
Well, why don't, why don't we leave it up to Scott and John and Jim to come up with a way to make that clear and, and, and make it clear that it's predicated on the need for access. Otherwise, you don't need a management plan.
Yeah.
And, Jim, I don't remember, is there a preliminary or introductory paragraph for this that outlines kind of what you were explaining to the members of the public earlier, that this is, this is no more restrictive than the current, than what we have to do with the coastal plan, that we are restricted by that and things like that? So, they understand that we're sort of operating in a bit of a bubble?
Well, I think we'd have to go back to the very first chapter and it talks about, you know, that we're implementing the coastal act and these policies and, but there isn't anything within the document that states what I, what kind of my mantra has been all along. We're just trying to maintain the status quo. We don't want to take on more restrictive standards. I've been telling that to the coastal commission staff all along. And, you know, they understand that, that, um, nothing specifically quite the same language in the document itself because it, I don't think it really belongs there. I don't think the coastal commission would be too, too happy with it either, you know, because we're not going to be any more restrictive than we currently are.
I keep getting lost on this.
Most of these developments, we're not going to be implementing the coastal plan on them anyway. Is that correct? Don't they have to go straight to coastal? Aren't they in that zone that will be processed specifically by the coastal commission?
Well, when we get into the IP, we'll get into that kind of detail, but they'll be in the appealable area. And so, any, anything that we, any permit we issue in that particular coastal commission has the opportunity to review if they disagree with, you know, our determination.
And they win?
Yeah, they're the ultimate, um, authority over-
Or the applicant, if they disagree with the city's determination, can appeal.
Exactly.
Right. Oh, exactly. But the ultimate decision is the coastal commission, correct?
Okay. Um, is there anything else on this specific matter, the, the issues regarding Cypress Shores? Okay, then what I'd like to do, if it pleases the commission, is to take a quick five-minute break and then let's go back and let's start from the beginning. And just to share on Alex, we also heard your points, even though we've only addressed those that are relative to Cypress Shore. So, we'll be seeing those or reviewing those later in this evening. All right, we're calling the meeting back to order. And at this point, John, would you begin walking us through the changes that were made since the last meeting in response to the commissioner's concerns?
Absolutely. So- Absolutely. So, if at any point you would like me to pull up the actual policy or policies, I can do that for you. Some of them we're just referencing and how the comment or concern is addressed in other policies. So, just let me know and I will pull that up. In, when we were discussing chapter five, one of the questions came up in regard to requiring or how is it allowed to provide the stairs down the revetment to the beach, that access? And it's actually not provided in chapter five, it's provided in chapter three, the access section. And that was addressed in, or that is addressed in policies 55, 56, 57. And then a correction to my staff report is policies 95 and 97. So, those policies do address the provided, providing public access to the beach, being that the revetment of the train tracks is between the, the beach and the public access point. So, provides that continued access to the actual sand itself and beach.
Okay. Any questions on that one? Okay, one down.
All right, moving-
We're on a roll.
Moving on to chapter four, this is also something that was brought up at the public comments today in determining what is an appropriate buffer. Can these ESHA and wetlands buffers be reduced to be less than 50 feet? And so, staff has removed the reference to 50 feet and just allows the buffer to be reduced from the 100-foot or whatever is identified to a lesser buffer as recommended by the biologist that would be required to do an assessment of the site as part of the scope of the project.
Where, where are we now on that? Res three?
We're in the staff report.
Oh, there?
Yeah.
Well-
So, I, I mean, you can-
Would you like me to pull up the, the policies themselves?
If you have a question about the policy, we can.
Well-
But, but what, what John is doing, Michael, is he's going through the staff report because he's addressing the comments that came up during the last meeting.
Yeah, we're there, sir.
And then if any of us have, uh, if any of us have any concerns, after he's outlined what he discovered or, you know, any of the action that he's taken, then he'll bring up the policy and we can look into it.
So, we're issuing, I guess we're, you referred to res three and res 36, chapter four.
That's correct. I'll, I'll jump to those just so that everyone can see. And then just a note for everyone, the modifications to this draft have been highlighted in blue to show what's happened since.
We're working our way through the rainbow.
Yeah, we've got a few colors left, so.
So, res three, chapter four, 422?
So, as you can see here in res three, um, so as you can see, the bullet points three and four have been, um, provided some added or modified text, um, to reflect the planning commission's comments on that. So, the third bullet point basically saying that if the applicant demonstrates significant constraints and sufficient protection of the wetlands, biological integrity, at that point, it can be reduced. And you can see that this, that there's been a strike through on the text to 50 feet earlier in the, that bullet point. Additionally, the text has been modified on the fourth bullet point, providing similar language.
And this is, this is consistent with the current coastal plan in terms of that sort of the more subjective way of measuring this as opposed to a hard number of feet?
There have been situations in the past with projects that have gone to the coastal commission that they required less than 50 feet. So, we feel that we don't want to make this any more restrictive than what coastal commission has been applying. And so, we feel that this language does provide us the, to, to allow for that level of flexibility that the coastal commission staff has been reviewing. Because let's say we have 50 feet and then let's say for part of the Marblehead Coastal Development, there's, there's developments that are in closer proximity than 50 feet, then, you know, we've just eliminated that potential. So, leaving it up to the biologist provides that integrity, but yet level of detail that to be analyzed at a later date deemed appropriate, depending on the, the integrity of the ESHA.
I think Don has some questions on this issue.
Well, yeah, well, we're on res three, we have this electronics mittel and all in paper from Cheryl Moe that also covers this particular area where she had, do you think this addresses some of her concerns or you think this is, where we're at is more appropriate that we can, that could float with the coastal commission? Because she has in here striking out 25 feet, 10, uh, a minimum buffer shall be provided. That might be a bridge too far, is that what you're saying compared to her inputs that we've received?
Well, the, the distances that have been identified on here and that are still on here are based on the recommendations from our, our consultant team. And the, so I think that some of our text is addressed, um, some of her, our text addresses some of her comments. I think that she also has, you know, the added text to some of the bullets established pri, by prior coastal development permit. Those types of pause, or added text would be fine to add in. However, we do have the language- However, we do have the language at the beginning of the draft saying that any coastal development permits that have predated the adoption of this draft will be in force and effect. So it's kind of already covered. And we would refer to those old coastal development policies if there was a development or amendment to a development that was proposed on a particular property.
So Scott, do you feel that there's, there's reason to include those references where Cheryl Mo has asked for them or are we, is it just as effective if we have those comments at the beginning of the section?
I think if they're in the preface, that's fine. I think it could be either way, either as introductory language, that we'd have to look at the formatting or are proposed.
Okay. All right, did you have more questions about Cheryl's submittal?
No, it just happened that we were on the same res that was in her submittal, so I thought while we're there, we'd just discuss it.
Okay. All right, let's, let's move on then, John.
Yes, so that leads us to Chapter 5. There were a number of topics that were discussed. First was hazard development, specifically related to HAZ 7, which there was concern that we shouldn't be allowing development in a hazardous area. And so Policy 7 ensures that there is no development within a hazardous area because there are certain safety factors that need to be evaluated. So if I can just flip to that policy. So it's, this is saying new development shall only be permitted where inadequate factor safety can be provided. So if inadequate factor of safety cannot be provided, then it is in a hazardous area and a new development would not be allowed. In addition to that, we have other policies that I've identified as, I believe it's 14, and then, let's see.
28.
At 28, I think 29 as well, to, which are further bolster this idea that we do not want development in hazard areas if it can't provide an adequate level of factor of safety and, you know, provide public safety. And so that is why all of these policies included within this section that have been identified ensure that that is the case.
Okay. Bonnie, that was, I think, your issue that you brought up. Are you comfortable?
Yes, there's one of them here.
Okay. All right, so you're, but you're comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
The safeguards in there.
Next, it was related to the maintenance of shoreline bluff and canyon protective devices. There was concern raised that maintaining the aesthetics of the protective devices and the coastal development permit is required for a number of different types of protective devices as well as their actual physical maintenance, structural maintenance to them because they want to evaluate the life of the device. However, in Haz 34, design of bluff and shoreline retention devices, it does identify the aesthetics of the protective device or retention device. And so for that matter, conditions of approval when we, when projects are approved can be tied to that to look specifically at the aesthetics. So that if these retention devices are visible to the public view, whether it's a canyon, bluff, or shoreline, that at the very least the aesthetics are maintained to ensure, you know, a quality visual appearance along the coastline.
Okay.
Next is lots in coastal canyons or adjacent to coastal edges. This is addressed in Haz 45, minimum coastal canyon development. And this policy allows for the minimum development necessary to avoid takings. So the framework and the specifics related to how the lot will be developed, where the structure will be placed, appropriate setbacks, will all be established through the implementation plan and will be site-specific, very similar to how a variance is reviewed and approved and through that process.
And I noticed the new language that changes, what can be included in the string line?
Yes, the change to the should to the shall.
No, I mean the, that are out of character. Isn't that, because that was new language, right?
Oh, yes, yes.
In Haz 44?
Yes, that is correct. That was also modified to provide further clarity on when they, when string line, when adjacent properties would be used as, in a string line analysis.
That was a good addition.
Yeah.
Okay.
Moving on to Chapter 6, there was a recommendation to provide a policy for fences and staging areas that are located within or adjacent to view corridors. These policies have been added to, to address those comments and require them to be evaluated.
I'm sorry, John, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I had a question about that. I wondered if we, if we might, and I apologize for word smoothing, but if we might want to change the way that sentence reads. Because currently, it seems to me that it's indicating that if you're adjacent to a public view corridor, that you need to have an open designed fence, but it might, you might be adjacent and it might not have any impact on the corridor. So perhaps if we made a contingent on it having impact before forcing somebody to take a particular approach to the design, so if it read, to ensure that fences that impact the corridor are an open design, blah, 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 blah.
And then were there any comments from any of the planning commissioners on the staging areas?
You're welcome.
Okay. Should we move on to?
Just, I mean, kind of per your, your previous comment, we say when they are, the staging areas are in or adjacent to public view corridors, if something is adjacent, is it impacting the public view corridor?
Yeah, I think that's why the language needs to be changed is to say if they impact it, then they need to have open design.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about 28.
Oh, I was. Oh, I'm sorry. So you're talking, oh, it's the same thing. I see.
I think 29 has a similar, similar kind of.
I see what you're saying.
Issue, yeah.
So can we make the same adjustment, John? I'm sorry, Jim, I didn't understand.
The only comment I would make is that the city might want to use that same staging area down there that Bonnie's objecting to when they actually put in our coastal trail extension wall for the nine tenths of a mile that we started building there. They might just consider using it again, but we'll be flexible.
Thank you for that provision also. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And then moving on to the definite, oh, just to add on to clarification for Chapter 6, definitions were provided and for public view corridors as well as scenic view corridors and the references to those were modified in Chapter 6. There were some that said, you know, I think there was included a street in there and roadways, and so we eliminated those to provide continuity.
I think it's a lot clearer now and it's more, and it synchronizes with the general plan more and then rippled over to the definitions, so good work. We're finally getting it there.
Keep adding the definitions.
Thank you.
Those, those of us who had those three or four hour discussions about those terms during the general plan really appreciate that.
Absolutely. We want to make sure your hard work is represented.
And for the acronyms too, for putting, doing the acronyms.
You're welcome. So as we touched on in the definitions, there have been a number of definitions that have been added, including clarification related to bluff face, bluff edge, canyon edge, to provide that additional level of clarity. So all of the definitions were either taken from the city's general plan, the coastal act, or we utilized the City of Newport Beach's glossary for their LUP as it is a recent, a draft that was recently approved.
Okay.
So that in a nutshell contains all of the major modifications to the draft. Are there any specific questions related to any of the particular policies?
I have a question. Does staff or does the city attorney want to address any of the issues related to capistrano shores or is that not necessary?
No, I think I'd like to, I have a couple ideas. First, I'd like to have Scott go through his memo and, you know, those key points. And then one of the things, you know, the reason why we're kind of pushed, part of the reason we were trying to push the schedule the way we were was we wanted to keep the continuity of the existing planning commission because we've gone through so many meetings. And we're trying to, you know, get you, Julia, to have like nine years of meetings within your eight-year period. So anyway, we were, you know, hoping to get this all done tonight. I completely understand, you know, Don's concern about, especially language as important as access and not seeing the final language for that. So what I can suggest is that we think about one more meeting because next week we don't have a, any, any regular scheduled meetings, it's, it's an extra week in the month. And that way, Julia, you could get one more meeting in. And, but.
I am trying to pay for my roof, so that, that would come in handy. Did you see how happy my spouse looked about, you know, that this was coming to an end?
But the one thing is that we wouldn't be able to get, I mean, there's a lot of little nuanced things that we're going to need to change and it's, to tell you the truth, that would happen anyway before we went to city council because John and I are going to reread it, our consultants are going to reread it, we're going to give it back to the, to the coastal commission and they're going to probably have more tweaks when it goes to the city council. So we're also going to ask for direction and hopefully at the next, if you're willing to do this, that you, you know, trust us to make some of those kind of clarification changes and things like that, not big monumental changes like the access. And at the next meeting, if we did a special meeting, we would try and have all the, you know, the kind of the key major issues discussed that we could. And Scott was going to go over his changes. There's a couple of things about FEMA mapping and stuff that we might not be able to get all the information to you by the next meeting.
Would we be okay for notice to have a meeting next week?
If we continue.
You can continue this meeting to that date if you do it tonight, yeah.
So this process is a little convoluted, but do, am I understanding it correctly that after we make our recommendation to council, council eventually approves, it goes to coastal, and then it would come back to us again as a, as a final check? Do I understand that?
Coastal Commission will review the document and even with all this, you know, interplay with the coastal commission staff and us, you can count on they'll have changes, you know, they're not going to just adopt it the way it's written. So they'll have what's called a list of suggested modifications that they'll get back to us at the end of the coastal commission hearing. And then we need to take it back to planning commission and city council for a final approval.
So I'm, I'm just thinking, new planning commissions will have to spin up on the LCP at.
Some point anyway, yeah.
You know, anyway, so what are we buying by having a meeting next week?
Well, that's going to be basically.
He's leaving for, for a month.
All the people for Julia are going to come again to our cards.
Yeah. That's really, that's really what's behind this.
I'm willing to get our way through. I mean, once we approve something, it's going to go to coastal commission and then city council. We're not going to see it for a while. And, you know, the smaller stuff and the, and the stuff you're going to try to polish off, you know, you know, I have trust in the planning staff going forward. But what I do feel critical before we sign off or send forward to the council is your stuff. Because I got 12 inches of capistrano shores I've been collecting for over four years. And so I want to go with your memo and then I want to see it where it lays in this document before I want to go forward to it to the council. Period. Can you produce something by next week?
Not on every single one of these points, commissioners. I just want you to be clear about that.
Okay, let's, let's go through the page here and see your letter.
Okay.
And find out what you're going to do.
Are you ready for that, Madam Chair, or were you still on here?
Are there any, are there any other thoughts regarding the ex?
Yeah, so Jim, answering your question, yeah, this is going to be probably at least six months away before the planning commission would ever see it again. And actually, the planning commission, I'd have to check about procedurally whether it would go back to planning commission or not. It may go directly back to city council. I can't remember, it's been so long since I did it last time. But generally, we would take something, my sense is that we would generally take it back to the planning commission for kind of the blessing of the planning commission because the council would want to hear planning commission's comments on, on the items.
So, so there's still also Don's comments that if we look at this as their time to get the, you know, these kind of changes in here.
Let Scott go through his items and let him identify the areas that he could respond to in the next, you know, several days and see if that's important enough. And then my recommendation would be just, we'll just continue to a regular meeting in July.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I'm Scott Smith, the city attorney. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Appreciate the comments and your work on this to date. I took this job April 1st and have been involved in, in, not just this process, but in litigation that, as you know, has, has been a significant drain on, on city resources. And the council, as I, as I took, as I took helm of the city attorney's office, authorized a standstill in that litigation. We've been working furiously to figure out a way to settle that. Much of the text before you relates to, to the potential settlement of those disputes. I have to tell you that a lot of it is hyper-technical, actually numbing. I learned this week that there was no agreement whatsoever on whether the zoning ordinances that are in your zoning code even apply to this property. So that's the level of dispute that we're talking about. From 100,000-foot level, my recommendation was to council and to you is to look at whether through this process, we can avoid some of those flashpoints in, in that litigation, not by compromising this document, but by not forcing issues that don't, don't need to be forced at, at this stage. Of course, ultimately, we'll know that as the text goes and comes from the coastal commission. But what I'd done in, in meeting with staff last week and meeting with opposing council over the last month is to try to think, again, this is up to you as a commission, what text absolutely has to be before you as a planning agency through this process? And that text is what I've included on, on the last page of this memorandum. Of course, as you've discussed earlier, it's up to you as a commission and your staff to decide whether you need to look at the actual text. And I appreciate the opportunity to flesh those provisions out if you think those need to happen.
And then I should just add that both Cecilia and myself have reviewed these with Scott to make sure that it doesn't compromise kind of the overall intent of the, the LUP that we've developed so far. So we were satisfied with the recommendations as they came up with them in the letter.
And they had to, they had to crank too. So I appreciate that. If it's all right with you, I'll walk you through these ideas. I'll tell you which ones I have specific solutions for in mind and which ones might need a little bit more technical analysis or even communication with the coastal commission before we lock in. And then you can decide how you want to address that in terms of timing with, with your staff. The, the first and I think paramount issue is the capistrano shores association's concern about being characterized as a traditional OS to open space zone in, in this plan. When you think about it, that makes sense. The, the underlying zoning, we believe, is open space, especially in the wake of Measure V. But as I said earlier, there's, there's no agreement between the two sides about, about whether that's true or not. A solution to that has already been, I think, vetted by the commission and the council and made effective in January this year. And that was to adopt a special non-conforming use ordinance that applied to mobile home parks and this park in particular. Capistrano shores is happy with that solution, but didn't want anything in this document to contradict that provision of the municipal code that the ink is still, almost still fresh on. One way of doing that was to qualify the characterization of the open space area in this plan with an asterisk, and that's if you turn to page 4. this plan with an asterisk, and that's if you turn to page four. What we think the commission would absolutely need to pass on. What this does is just explains that the zoning on this parcel is more complicated than just open space. The city recognizes 1959 non-conforming use and has adopted an ordinance that memorializes that. Policy LU 100 was a way to consider not fighting about every jot and tittle of that ordinance now, but proposing that the park between now and the effective date of this LUP, consider master plan or a master permit, or as might be permitted under the act, a master waiver that would consider parameters for master, for all development in the park and to lock in on that so that it doesn't have to be fought over at every juncture as has been the course over the last couple of years. So, what this does is modifies with this caveat, the open space designation on that property indicates that it's a little more complicated than just an open space zone, and proposes the process, not the solution, of a master permit for the project, which would be addressed in LU 100, which we might as well speak to that. This would slide in in the text relating to special planning areas. When it comes to the Marblehead Coastal area, the plan says the development there will be as permitted in that master permit. There's not one on this property yet, but the plan would provide for consideration of the unique zoning status and a master permit on the park. It would not cover past development, but only prospective development.
Jim, and then Bart?
I have two questions. One is, you mentioned that they were happy with the zoning ordinance that we had changed, and I just wanted to make sure, because the last thing I heard was that that was not true, that there was a, that they had a permit pending, and we changed our zoning ordinance, and then they said, well, we're going to continue with our permit, you know, to court. Is that still true, or have they decided that they like the ordinance and they're going to apply for their permit through that process?
I think the substance, I won't speak for them, but I think there's agreement on the substance of the ordinance. What they don't agree with is that, is the city's conditioning Title 25 permitting, building permits, with the condition subsequent, or, I'm sorry. What we do before we issue a Title 25 permit is require Coastal sign-off as a precondition. It's that sequencing that they take issue with. This master permit would do away with that dispute, because the idea is we'd have everything pre-permitted within certain parameters that would be approved by the city, so that there's no need to worry about whether, how Title 25 sign-offs and Coastal sign-offs occur. They'd occur simultaneously.
Okay.
Excuse me just a second, Jim. Alex, why don't we, once we go through the city attorney's memo, if you'd like three minutes to address or perhaps answer questions, the commissioners, you're welcome to come back up. All right, thank you.
The other question I had was this, the creation of essentially, it sounds like a special permit or a special authority to deal with these, you know, with the special issues or relationship there because of this. I kind of want to get my head around what's that, what that's going to be required from the city. And where I'm coming from with that question is, is we're, you know, as Don has said, we've been hearing about this for many years now, since the general plan. And the city seems to be stuck between state agencies and, you know, a desired and appropriate zoning and things like that. And there's things that we've learned over the years that we, you know, can do and can't do and things like that. I, it almost seems like a lot of these, the big boys got to resolve things so that we can kind of get on with our lives and make the kind of decisions we have to make, and we don't have to worry about making those decisions and getting hit with lawsuits because there's some disagreement. So, this, whatever authority this is, and maybe this is the kind of language you're going to produce for us, but, you know, is it going to be, is it at least going to resolve things so that we can continue with our business and we, you know, we can let the Housing Authority and the Coastal Commission and Capistrano Shores and let them all figure out whatever the heck it is that they need to figure out?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner and Commissioners. Yeah, I call that role that the city's been playing kind of the hacky-sack role between these two titans, right?
You mean, we are the hacky-sack?
We are the hacky-sack, yeah. Between HCD, which has certain goals and objectives that may or may not coincide with the Coastal Commission's goals and objectives. One thing that we need to iron out, by the way, oh, I'm sorry about the typo, well, there's two typos. One thing that we need to iron out is how those permits sequence between the mobile home park permitting under the uniform codes and Coastal permitting under this plan. One goal that I have is to make sure, and we share this with opposing council, is to try to have only one definition that works for mobile home park permitting under Title 25, HCD permitting, so to speak, and Coastal permitting. And we need to harmonize, I propose those provisions in here, so that's over once and for all. I don't think that's going to be hard, but that's one of the goals that we'd have, is to harmonize those, get input from those agencies on it. And then, if we have pre-approved a mast, not we, but if the owner has pre-approved a master permit that the city supports, that then is incorporated into the LCP through this process, that should iron out a lot of those kinks. And I don't think at that point, those state agencies would have anything to fight about.
If the city's going to issue a master permit, whatever that is, isn't that going to require Coastal Commission approval?
Yeah.
It's a coastal development permit, Mark.
Yeah.
That's the word.
It depends on the scale of it, yeah. I think the process that's envisioned at this stage, Commissioner, would have that launching right now, that process to the Coastal Commission, so that as this plan is finally adopted, the goal would be to have that in place, so it could be incorporated into this plan, just like the Marblehead permit is.
And if they don't like that concept?
If they coastal?
Uh-huh.
That would be, then all bets are off. This would be subject to individual permitting under the LCP. So, this is why this text identifies a process, not an ultimate outcome.
And so, the intent there is that Capistrano Shores would initiate a master coastal development permit and submit to Coastal Commission as soon as possible. Is that the...
That's the idea, Commissioner. Probably as they did that, they'd bring it over here first to get the city's views on it, knowing that ultimately, it's going to find its way into our LCP. So, the idea wouldn't be for us to be the applicant to Coastal on that permit, but to be involved in that process, so that Coastal would have our views on it and ideally, our endorsement of that application as it goes over there. There's a little bit of a prototype for that that happened this year. Space number 12 didn't come here, but space number 12 was an exact same in size replacement of an old coach and a dilapidated coach. And that went to Coastal. Coastal, for all intents and purposes, approved that permit. It was consistent in, what's our zoning sign-off called, conceptual?
Concept.
Our conceptual review found that it was consistent with the city's zoning. And so, the idea would be that you'd take that little test case and maybe expand it. It'd have to be with analysis of view sheds, view impacts, according to city standards, but it would be done in consultation with the city before it was submitted to Coastal. So, ideally, we'd be on the same page as that application goes over there.
And so, if there's conflict between their submittal and some of the city staff, then we will have to sit there and fight all that stuff out before they go forward with their plan.
Try to pound it out.
Issues on views and some of the other things that they constantly bring up.
Right. I assume that process would involve the input of this commission. It would be, I think, a good thing for the commission and the council, at least at the conceptual level, to look at that little test case, space 12, and see whether that could be amplified.
I would think so, because I think it's something that involves a lot of, you know, technical issues.
Yeah.
And so, I would think the council would value the input of the commission. Okay?
Oh, let's see, I'm sorry. Is that, so that's the most important part, I think, for you as a planning agency. Again, I don't disrespect any desire to see these solutions specifically in other contexts, but let me tell you what the concepts are and if we have a solution in mind, what that would be. That was number one, and these are actually follow pretty easily. The park had at the introduction, something that staff wants to look at, and I do think this could be done in the next, in the next couple of days. They're just refinements relating to the interface of flood control facilities and park facilities. There needs to be a little sorting out. It's not so important to us as it is to the, to the park about who owns what at those pinch points at the north end of the park. Again, it's a technical issue. I think, I don't think staff has any real strong feelings on it, but between they and we, I think we can get you specific language about those technical items in the description of the park. At worst, we delete some of the text that's not really important to the LUP's analysis. I spoke to number three. Again, I don't know whether every landowner will be pleased with a nod to general constitutional precepts, but we have those on tap that we can share with you certainly. I was ready to share them tonight, but I don't think that's appropriate. We can certainly have those to you at a subsequent meeting. And I think the park's close to their comfort level with that, if not the other community. Of course, they haven't seen it. There are a couple of issues that really, I'm coming to number four. These issues relate to kind of, I don't know, the clash of the titans between HCD and Coastal and perhaps other battles that are being fought with the Coastal Commission. These, I think we just need to monitor. The text is probably okay now, but we just need to, we just need to highlight it and watch as this proceeds in communication with the commission. The text that's in the plan right now is controversial. It's the subject of litigation between several property owners and the Coastal Commission. It has to do with what the association thinks it's its obligation to repair the revetment wall if it's damaged to protect homes. I think Coastal and Capistrano Shores are close to working out a solution on that text, but we don't have it right now, and we won't have it Tuesday or probably the Tuesday after that. This was the only sticking point on the issuance of Coastal permits for space number 12, the condition that Coastal imposed relating to repair of the revetment wall if it's damaged. So, I think that's an issue to flag, if not, if we can't resolve it during the dependency of the coastal commission's consideration of this. I mentioned the text about non-conforming uses and structures. Right now, your draft plan reiterates the test that I mentioned earlier that's found in section 17.7206E, 060E of the municipal code. This is the text that was added in January. The trigger for permitting under that section differs somewhat from the trigger that Coastal uses. To me, it makes absolutely no sense to have your building department ultimately using one test for the trigger of permitting and your planning department to use a different test, if you get my drift. To the extent that we can try to harmonize those and get Coastal sign-off on whatever we agree they ought to synchronize to say, I think that's worth exploring. For my likes, because it has resulted in a settlement of significant issues, I would suggest going with the subsection E. But we don't know if that's going to fly with Coastal. That's mentioned here sometimes in the text, but again, the existing test for permitting of work on non-conforming uses under the Coastal Act is a little different from that sub-E. So, I'd like the chance to try to harmonize those, and I can show you how those match up and have a proposal about which way to go with that, just understanding that Coastal may not accept subsection E. They've never had the chance to sign off on it. There's characterizations of, an identification of view shed corridors in your plan. Capistrano Shores doesn't accept the view shed designated in the plan. That's something that staff needs to talk to Coastal about. They have no problem punting on that issue and stating that view sheds will be as determined in...
You're talking about the view areas in our current general plan that just got approved?
Right.
That come from the Marblehead Coastal portions of it?
They take issue with those. Whether that's an issue that we need to lock in on in this plan or that could be deferred on that property subsequently?
Well, there are charts in this plan that show it.
I know.
And synchronizes with our general plan.
Yeah.
And we had a lot of discussion on that, and they should stand as they are.
I think, Commissioner and Madam Chair, that this, that would remain intact, might be refined or become the basis for the master permitting as we go, but I don't anticipate that that text would change. I just wanted to call that to your attention. It's a sticking point for them, that we might be able to take some of the edge off by reference to this special planning area. The other, the last three issues in number five are the only ones that I know about. They're definitional issues that we just need to, that staff just needs to think through a little bit. There's a mention of two-way pedestrian access as opposed to just access. I don't know whether that's a fatal point in the document. It's something that Capistrano Shores has raised. There is a term used in the plan that is obsolete structures, and that's not defined. So, John and Jim and I want to think a little bit about what that means. I don't know whether that's a term of art that Coastal uses. My strong preference would be to make reference to your nuisance ordinance. It has a very nice, specific laundry list of what constitutes a public nuisance, which includes obsolete or abandoned or dilapidated structures. That increases, they don't want their homes to be considered obsolete structures subject to abatement under this plan, and I think that sentiment's understandable. If we have a tried and true standard in your zoning ordinance, that's the definition of what constitutes a nuisance, that gives them peace of mind, and actually, I like that solution better than using a term of art that we're not really sure is defined. And then, Jim mentioned the last one. There's reference to flood zones in a generic sense and then in a very specific sense in the hazardous sections. I'd like to look at your FEMA maps and find out exactly what those flood zones are and then use precise language there. That gives them peace of mind, knowing that we're referencing FEMA standards for flood zones and hazards as opposed to some undefined, yet-to-be-determined standard. And that will take a little time to dig down and figure out, but it's, the intent, I know, was to use the FEMA flood zone mapping, as you do for every other zoning purpose.
I thought we used the FEMA maps in our general plan and in the EIR for the general plan, did we?
I think you did. And what we just need to do is comb that text through the back of this document so that it, so that all aligns under those specific terms. And that's it. Again, I apologize that this came late. The issues are complex. I didn't want to, I wanted to assist you and staff in knowing exactly what they meant, so that we didn't compromise in any way the city's position by either adopting proposed language or rejecting it. And so, this is a summary. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Alex, did you want to step forward and either speak to any of those issues or answer Commissioners' questions?
Yeah, sure. I can answer any questions.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair and honorable Commissioners. When we're talking about some of the items here, I think City Attorney Smith accurately described it as a direction, and that's the whole reason why we reiterate and re-adopt our objections, because we know we're kind of trying to walk a direction. We don't really know what the destination, the ultimate solution will be like. It's dependent on a feedback from the Coastal Commission. And we absolutely respect the city attorney's position that you guys can only negotiate so far with these provisions and provide us so many answers with regard to language that Coastal has proffered without risking the denial of your LCP. And then, that would make the language useless to us anyway. So, we think it's a pragmatic approach. We appreciate it. To the timing issue, we acknowledge that the city attorney has met with us on and off on a weekly basis and in great detail, specifically hammered through these issues. And... and, and filtered them, the protection of staff, from speaking with, you know, an attorney on something like this. So we absolutely appreciate the representation and apologize if, if that, that communication anyway created delay, but this is absolutely for the protection of your staff, and it was, it's been done very professionally and very timely from, from a communication with an outsider. Agreed generally on the comment with regard to not growing use in the LCP. As to the zoning issue, we believe that's more of a procedural or process issue, not necessarily the zoning ordinance amendment there. So I believe that the statements were fair, particularly the statement that previous concerns were a procedural concern. Our concern here with the LCP is the, is the sexual zoning and zoning consistency issue, which is being dealt with in a novel solution in a way that didn't exactly meet the kind of examples that we offered, but it moves a direction and it has, it's an iterative process, we appreciate. And we hope that the city would be directly involved and directly commenting on that master CDP going in, because candidly, a straight applicant going into Coastal Commission has quite a lengthy wait, so we would have a hard time getting back meaningful comments, I think, without some sort of imprimatur of the city or, you know, at least some sort of comment and direct involvement. View areas, you know, I think there's a, we've alleged that there's a conflict between HCD and the Coastal Commission specifically on the view area with, even without regard to the, the view areas specifically identified. And so I think that's been an area that's been specifically acknowledged would be considered in the master permit, would potentially be discussed in the implementation plan, you know, just, it would require more information and specific feedback based on who we would view the, the people that do the most view analysis Coastal in, in that specific comment to that, to that master permit. We specifically appreciate the comment and the response on the obsolete language. It's dark, it's vague and ambiguous, and the nuisance paradigm makes sense because it's a, it's a procedure and it has a, has a due process connotation to it as opposed to an arbitrary distinction of obsolete and then a demand for abatement. And then again, just wanted to direct that LU 100 language, we had just asked, sorry, as a, for the proposed language, I'm not sure if it got mentioned again. The language and the unique zoning status of Capistrano Shores Mobile Home Park in a master coastal development permit, my previous comment was just ask to replace in a with, together with, or something that was more open, because again, we don't know exactly what Coastal would give back. Coastal says this isn't gonna fly, but specifically make a change, you can make a change to your LCP. We would hope that the city would, you know, consider that comment back and give it the leeway to, to take that kind of comment back. And we really appreciate your time and the consideration.
Don, do you have a question for Alex?
So then you're aligning yourself with this master, I should probably suggest capitalizing master, but you, in your previous 400 pages you delivered to us about several weeks ago, you were requesting an overlay. So you backed off on that overlay then?
Well, that's what I had suggested, that we had proffered examples of overlays. Specifically, I think we gave an example of the city of San Diego, we gave an example of up north, of places where people have mobile home park preservation overlays, acknowledging that mobile home parks are kind of, you know, quirky areas with the unique overlay of mishmash of different law. And those overlays specifically dealt with preservation of mobile home parks, basically saying that people won't go rip them out and replace them with, you know, high-rise condominiums, won't go, won't try to do anything else, wouldn't do anything detrimental to those residents that we're trying to protect, basically. The city was, I think, a little bit uncomfortable with, with that for a couple of technical reasons, but was willing to move forward in this master permit framework. And so in good faith, we understand their concerns. We may disagree with them, but we at least understand the concerns, we're willing to walk down that path and see where, see where it gets us. Because I think, I think, I think Capistrano Shores' requests have been definitely tempered. We're not asking for anything that we don't think the city would be able to lawfully provide and that this coastal commission would necessarily take umbrage with. But, so in short, it is not exactly what we asked for, but it's an alternative proposal that we're working toward, we're willing to work with the city.
Because this master plan is, is kind of ill-defined, and so is this gonna be a microcosm of our general plan, a specific plan, or is this, are, are you working with land use experts on the staff so we can put some flesh on these bones, or what is what we're dealing with here?
Yeah, Mayor and, or, Mayor and Council.
You just got familiar.
Yeah, Commissioners and Madam Chair and Commission, I, I think that, we have talked about it, and I think a specific plan is the closest thing to it. There is precedent up and down the, the California coast for master permits for entire parks. Some of those are done pursuant, pursuant to specific development permits. There's a de minimis test that probably fits some of the, remember space 22? That's still pending before the commission. The, the commission has found that the de minimis waiver may cover that, that proposal for space 22. So either vehicle could be used, but I think a specific plan we've discussed is probably the closest thing to, to, to the vision here.
Okay, because a specific plan is, can be a very extensive document, so I mean, this is not a minor undertaking.
What we've told, this is just based on council direction, I don't want to talk about it too much. It would be some, it would, it would contemplate what we, what we talk about as check the box. It would be subject to, it would define criteria that is not perceptible in terms of view sheds and view shed impacts, that certainly is not, this is from my standpoint, that certainly is not, does not contemplate two-story development and, and would be sensitive and would essentially have to be imperceptible from, from the view sheds that you've been discussing. So that's my, my criteria for it, but yes, it would be, it would be as extensive and as specific as those two applications that the commission has looked at this year, title twenty, or space 22 and space 12, which sound really simple, but, but the analysis hasn't been simple at all. And, and so it would be at that level multiplied, you know, for the entire area of the park. Yes. Space by space, impact by impact.
Are there any questions for Alex? Okay, thanks, Alex. Appreciate it. Okay. Any further questions for Scott? So given, given Scott's discussion of, of each of these points and, you know, the status and process related to each of these points, is there an inclination to feel that we would benefit from having an additional meeting next week? Or do we feel that, that, that wouldn't be necessary, wouldn't serve a, a purpose? Don, you probably feel most strongly about it. I want to share your thoughts.
I've been talking too much tonight, so other people, other people be the lead dog for once or something. I'm uncomfortable with, with the suggested amount of legal assistance that suddenly becomes required. That will, with statements that will say, at a future date, we will provide wording, at a future date, we will provide, and further consideration, we will provide, as it proceeds to council, several non, you know, other land-based use points. We don't believe this planning commission needs to consider specific texts in these areas, but want to flag them for you. I'm just, I started reading through Scott, some of your, your language there, and I'm sorry, in the words of the great Ronald Reagan, trust but verify. And I just, I think it just, it got to a point where I feel uncomfortable carrying out my duties as appointed as a planning commissioner to recommend something going forward as important as this document and with some of the issues that you have brought up, and so I just want to see them in black and white. And that's my feeling. The other Commissioners, I'll, I will abide by the, the majority.
Jim first, now. Okay, Jim?
I, I think I feel more or less as, as Don does. I'd like, there's, these are obviously, you've actually given some clarity to them. I think, I think calling them out like this is, is definitely helpful, but they are also, you know, it sounds like some of them are vocabulary issues that we can get through easily, but others are not. And the one thing that concerns me with this LU 100, I think it's a good direction, it's a good idea. It certainly, it sounds to me like we're pursuing, although I'm, I'm not the lawyer, it's not my, that, that part of it's not my decision, but I, I am a little uncomfortable with having something in the LCP that says, here's the structure for solving this problem, and then we approve that, because we don't actually have the problem solved. And, you know, or at least not, you know, really a good place to stand in terms of that. So I then have a concern of, you know, we go forward and six months, 12 months goes by and for whatever reason, things fall apart. So, yeah, I'm definitely interested in, to see what you would, you know, craft with this, but in terms of approving the LCP with just sort of a, kind of a promise, you know, a promise for a promise to have it resolved, a betrothal, I guess, is what it would be. But to move forward with, with just that, it, it just seems to me where there's, there's a bit too high of a risk of things kind of falling, important things sort of falling through and then not getting what we expect out of, out of the LCP. So that would, that would be my concern.
Just to, to comment on that, keep in mind that this will be an overriding policy that'll have to actually have all those specifics that we're hopefully going to be working with Coastal Commission and Capital Shores to define in the IP. So it'll be really specific in the IP portion as we move forward. If, if they don't go forward with this master plan, then what happens is then it's just individual permit for every coach that comes in, which would be, the, the status quo will be maintained, and maybe we can put some kind of, you know, a little additional language that shows that that's the fallback. If they don't follow through with this, then the Coastal Commission will still require, or the city, depending on whether we get our certification, permits for each individual coach without that master plan, which is their incentive to get that, right?
Yeah, I think we would, it's, it's a good point. I think we would need at least that of, you know, if this falls through or until the, the IP is complete, you know, this is what's gonna be the, the standard.
Scott, I, I thought we put something like that in the land use table portion, didn't, we discussed it, I don't know if it actually?
Well, that we had, but then we just, the asterisk just modified the OS two one, but, but that could, we could have a, a series of boxes just for, just for this site.
Bonnie?
Oh, I was just gonna say, Scott, would you be able to have the language at the forward time available for us to review before the next proposed meeting if, if we should have one next week?
Would you allow me to just quickly go through and tell you what I can and can't, and then, and then you'll know?
To make it, you know?
The replacement text on the last page, what goes in the land use designation, we can, we can certainly have back to you with these refinements that, that you just mentioned. So that's number one. Number two, that, that's pretty easy. We just have to, Jim and I just have to close on, on that. Number three, I've, I've got essentially done. We need to show how 46, 49, and 56 interrelate. I've got that, that'll be, we can do that by the time you're together. The revetment wall is gonna be a punt, and you'll probably just leave that the way it is for now, with, with that understanding. The non-conforming uses and structures, I don't know. We'll, we'll see what we can do on that. Listen to John and Jim, and I need to put those all on, on a table and see how they interrelate, but I've got them flagged, so I could do that for you. View shed corridors, I like the idea of referencing your general plan there. I think that's all we'll do there, and we can, we can work on that reference. I'm not sure what to do with two-way pedestrian passage without Coastal's input. Maybe we can get that Friday or Monday.
Staff can work on that part, to see if it's even an issue. I don't know why it would be. I think.
We can, we can talk about that next week.
I'm not sure why it's an issue. I mean, are, are all accesses, don't you get to take an access? Aren't you always allowed to go both ways, or are you only allowed to go one way?
We'll have Alex explain that next week, because he has to come too. Leaving that one aside, the obsolete structure one, we've got solved, we can write for you. I think the FEMA one, I don't want to promise on that one, because that's gonna, that's gonna take people other than me, but I, I think those we could have for you. So it's the non-conforming use thing that we probably can't iron out, and, and that might be it, once we look at these definitions in five.
You say the non-conforming use you cannot iron out?
Well, I've just, we've got to sit down with staff and with Coastal and, and find out what they think about your new ordinance. You don't, you don't have that input yet.
Okay.
And, and I'm sorry, can you remind us, because I, I lost track, the Cypress Shores language, is, would you be able to have that or no?
Yeah, there, I would be able to have a, a general solution and a general commitment to the Nolan Dole and proportionality, proportionality test. Whether that, you know, whether that meets their approval will, will just remain to be seen once, but we can certainly draft and circulate that.
Well, then that sounds like about 80 or 90% of the issues could be.
I think so. We've, we've been blocking out since, since we last met on, on specific inserts.
I think Michael says.
This master coastal development permit, interesting. Does that exist with approval with the Coastal Commission and any other localities that we know of?
I think, I think we decided it did.
Regarding this mobile home context?
Oh, I'm sorry, is, using a mobile home park?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to ask the question of, is there, mobile homes are found along the beach a lot in California, and I can't imagine this being a totally unique one. If it is, I'd like to know that, but if it's not, and this, it's been solved through a coastal development permit, I'd like to know that it has and where it might have, where it might have happened, and if it has, that we might be able to look at, at the language involved with something like that. So that's a question. I don't know, give me answer right now, but I'm, I'm looking for that answer in my mind as we look at this as a solution. The worst thing I could think of is we're going down this path and Coastal Commission says, I don't like this idea of a coastal development permit, and we need to do something different. So we could spin our wheels on that, so we, it seems like some homework's involved. Then my second question is, sorry about this, but I don't, the or de minimis waiver, I don't know what that means. What does that mean?
That's a term of art from the act, and, and with, that has standards, and I'll get you that. We can show you how that works.
Is that an equivalent of a master coastal development permit? Is similar?
It's as good as, the, the, there had been explor, well, Alex, you can answer. There had been exploration with Coastal about de minimis waiver that would cover space 22 and others like it. So we can, we can get you more detail on, on how that was gonna play out, but a de minimis.
I'm looking for the bigger picture question. Does this exist out there somewhere in California? Has California Coastal Commission dealt with it?
Go ahead.
And what can, what can we learn from that?
I think Alex can, can help you on that.
Sure, and so two answers. One, as to a specific coastal development permit issued to, issued to a park that predates the Coastal Act, not to our knowledge, but in particular, in particular because, I'm sorry, let me clarify, as to replacing a mobile homes inside of a, a park, not to our knowledge, because, yeah, candidly, up until the recent activity toward Capistrano Shores, we have little if no record of any coastal development permit authority being asserted against mobile home parks. I mean, by definition, usually met the definition of de minimis. You know, it's basically rolling in a mobile, and it's personal property. And just given the, given the temporary nature in and of itself of a mobile home, they usually apply de minimis waivers, and that's changed. And that actually is at, at the heart of some of the, some of the legal disputes, I think, between individual residents of Capistrano Shores and the Coastal Commission, and that, that part will get settled separately. As to precedent for, or dealing with mobile home parks in the coastal zone, that was actually the ground, the ground for our suggestion of the overlay, because there are overlays in land use planning in coastal zone that specifically preserve mobile home parks, even if they're, even if they become legal non-conforming, preserve them, basically recognizing that people live there and that the typical land use planning law can be ill-equipped to deal with personal property and the rolling in and out of mobile homes and definitions like redevelopment and all the issues we've brought before. So.
So do we have any feel with that concept of how the Coastal Commission might feel about it? Has there been any reaching out to them, any feedback? Is this the right way to go? Where, where are they? Where are they coming from?
Coastal Commission has said anecdotally in a individual member's application for a coastal development permit, that they were specifically being confronted with the fact that all these view studies and everything are terribly expensive for a mobile home, and, you know, it appears to conflict with HCD, and Coastal staff actually speculated that coming in for a master permit or something like that would be helpful.
Yeah, Commissioners, they did tell us, Coastal staff did, in a telephone conversation, they would very much favor that approach.
Okay. Jim?
Am I right that this, the non-conforming uses and structures text would need to, is closely related to number one, because number one, where you, that's what we're talking about, the CDP and the de minimis waiver?
Yeah, those provisions all interrelate.
Yeah, so, I mean, the stuff that you're, as long as you can get a lot of this done, but it seems to me the non-conforming uses and structures, because it relates to this, this whole way, that whole structure that the, you know, would we use the CDP, or, you know, what would we use, that's kind of like the, it seems to me to be the heart of the matter, so that's, just in terms of our, you know, you know, our schedule and what we're going to review, how much we're going to have, I'm just, I'll go with, if the, if the Commission wants to have a meeting next week, I'll be here, as long as you don't interfere with the fireworks, but, but I'm, you know, and we'll get some work done, I'm sure, but I'm not sure that we're going to get all the way to the point of, can we give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down? So that's, that's kind of my conclusion based on what we've been talking about.
So, you know, your point is it'll move the ball forward, but it's not going to sink a basket.
Yeah.
Do you like that? Oh, I use two different sports.
Making your sports metaphor.
Very good, Chair Gordon.
You can tell I'm not really a jock. I, you know, I think that's a good, I think that's a good point. You know, I don't know, I don't know if there's, if there's benefit in us, in us just moving it forward, if we can't have, you know, all that information, if it makes sense to have a special meeting.
Well, how much more time would you need to get the materials together that we could approve?
On those latter points, Jim, what?
I, you know, I think that it's always understandable that whenever we bring something to you, there's no absolute, and I think it's absolute there is, that there isn't an absolute. So I think that we can move this along to a point where you may be able to decide that it's far enough along to approve it and feel, as Don said, you know, confident that you've actually reviewed something and can recommend it to the City Council. So I think it would be advisable, and just based on the length of this process and the continuity, I think there's a lot to be said about the continuity of this Commission reviewing it, that we go ahead and do it, and even if we don't get it all done, I still think there's value to it, because then it would just even lessen the amount that would have to be reviewed by new staff or new planning Commissioners at a meeting in July. So for those reasons, I think that would be worth a try. I actually think we're going to get most of those things done.
Because you, you have a trick to light a fire under him to get that done?
No, well, I think that we can do some of the heavy lifting for Scott, I know Scott's, you know, a busy man like we are, so, especially with the FEMA maps.
We've got a big Council agenda due on Tuesday, so that's why I'm being really careful about overcommitting.
So if, if we do move forward with a meeting next week, I would recommend that we have it be specific to this material only.
Yes.
That we don't, that we're not, open up to cover other.
That's, well, the issues, the capicentral shores that has been folded into the work plan here.
This memo.
Yeah.
You mean the Cypress Shores, you mean, the stuff, this plus Cypress Shores.
This plus Cypress Shores, is what I'm trying to, yeah, because of the, those areas there.
Okay, do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Bart, are you?
No.
All right, well, then, I will move that we continue this item to a, an adjourned regular meeting next Wednesday, whatever that is, July 1st, I think?
No.
Oh, excuse me, June 30th, yes.
June 30th.
And that's a Wednesday?
It's a Tuesday, June 30th.
Does Council have a meeting next week?
No.
No, okay. So that we move it to adjourn, that we continue this item to June 30th here in Council Chambers at 6:00?
Plenty of time.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, at 6:00, and that we focus specifically on the items listed in the Best, Best and Krieger memo that we were given today, as well as the.
Cypress Shores.
Cypress Shores issue that was discussed as well.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hold on, I understand reviewing this, I'd like a little bit more clarity about what we're going to do with the Cypress Shores. There was three or four spots in there that you were going to propose.
And we're going to be reviewing that as well.
Yeah, so we, you have that targeted for what we're going to get?
Yeah, I think so.
You said you thought that was an issue.
I think we understood the direction.
I think they overlap with what we've been working on.
Did you overlap, that there was some clarity about talking about the hierarchy? That we'll put, we'll include that in there.
Well, to me, there's some very different issues here with, with the mobile home park than there is in Cypress, Cypress Shores, and there we have access and a whole host of issues surrounding that. That's, that's, to me, a minor issue here, so I just, we're going to put them both to bed, we're going to understand.
Yes.
Okay.
I have one more issue, if I could, I'm sorry, I just caught it for John. One comment on page 2-49, Land Use 92, Parking. Yes, this is my book, 2-49, Land Use 92, Parking. The bottom sentence is, the city will avoid structures as parking solutions, and I would suggest, or at least suggest to the Commission, that maybe the wording is, the city will avoid if possible, or will if possible avoid.
Will, if feasible.
If feasible, in other words, give our, give our future City Councils flexibility and not forbid, I know parking structures have been built in the city in the last 90 years, but I don't think we should tie the city's hand by prohibiting it in this particular document, that's the catch I saw.
Is this consistent with the general plan?
This is a policy taken directly from the general plan.
Was it?
So we can't change it?
Then we can't, if it's a general plan?
Well, we can, but we shouldn't.
You're right, I stand corrected.
Okay, so I believe we have a motion and a second?
And I just, yes, we do. I just wanted to make clear, what we approve is not going to be 100%, we've still got land use elements, and also, this vote that we take is not going to be, it's not 100%.
I think it's understood, like the whole land use table is under, you know, with 3.2 and everything else in process, that that's got to be updated at a later date.
But we're, but I think we'll have, we'll have brought the.
I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Yeah.
Right, the land use table is going to be, because we also have a general plan amendment going forward, and you'll be reviewing that, so understand that the land use table will ultimately be made consistent with what is approved in the general plan amendment.
In full disclosure, I am not able to be here Tuesday night without a significant change in a very important family event. We'll have coverage, it'll be Mal or someone who knows exactly where you're picking up, and I'll make every effort to change that, but I didn't, I didn't want to catch you off guard and just not show up Tuesday.
I think we're all comfortable with Mal, I don't, I don't see any reason why that would be a problem. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes 6-0. All right, that brings us to reports of Commissioners, and we have a member of the public present. Did you want to step forward at this time, or?
Oh, sure, why not? I can go home.
I'll give you a quick explanation. I come home after these meetings and rave about how you handled the meetings, and she thought it would be appropriate to give you some flowers for.
Oh.
Yeah, mating space.
Guess you could have a wrist cut off for coming up here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all you've done.
Oh, I appreciate it.
I appreciate it, I tried to see it at home.
I think before we let her off the dais, that we'd some of the Commissions out of say a few words about Julia, and I'd like, in the last six years almost for me, fabulous opportunity for me to get to know you, and I will echo the comments of the other people earlier tonight, your intelligence, your fairness, your ability to run a meeting, to be accommodative, to, and you're staring at me like you've got x-ray visions in there, but it's been fabulous, Julia, I mean, I've really admired you, and it's been a pleasure to get to know you and work with you, and you've done an awesome job.
Thank you, Don, I appreciate that, and I feel the same way about you.
And I, I wanted to say, you know, there's a lot I could say about you.
But how about I've been paying you not to say those things?
But, you know, many of the things that people have said, talked about, your intelligence and integrity, I was going to say that, but I, I think you have two legacies that you're, that you're leaving behind, and one is what's going, what's happened in the city as a result of the eight years you've been here, you've, you know, it's a more beautiful place, you know, it's a more pristine place, it's a more preserved place, and everybody walks around and they love San Clemente and know it's great, but when you, you know, if you've been in this room for any length of time, you know that that stuff happens for a reason, it happens on purpose, and you've done so much to make the city beautiful while you've been here, and, you know, your attention to detail and your, you know, your commitment to it, it just, it shows, it shines in the city. And I think you have another legacy that's actually here on the Planning Commission, the way, it's no, it's no coincidence that this is your second term as the Chair, you know, we love you as the Chair, it's, you know, you do such a wonderful job, again, your fairness, your intelligence, your even-handedness, and your commitment to making the most, to applying our best intelligence, the best information, the best thinking to every decision, that leaves an impression on a body like this, I think, and when you move on, that, you know, some of that's going to remain, some of that, that's kind of what we've learned as a result of you being here and saying what you're saying and being, you know, being the Chair, so I think you have this dual legacy that you, that you're leaving behind, and I'm very, very grateful both for the legacy and for the chance to have worked with you for the last few years and to have met you and, you know, become your friend, it's, you know, it's a, you know, it's something I'm very, very grateful for in my life, so thank you.
Well, thank you, I am as well, thank you.
My turn? Julia, I just want to say that being the newbie here, except for maybe Bonnie, but I still feel pretty much like a newbie, that you've made me feel at home here. Julie's done something very special for me that you all might not know, one is that she's shown me that she's very professional, she really knows how to handle this, and she's really been a mentor for me to look forward under the Planning Commission and be an example to follow, and she's very professional, and I love what she does, and I feel sorry that I hardly, hardly know you, and I hope that I know you better, but there's another side too that's very close to the heart, and she's helped me with some personal issues that we don't need to get into, but that she has the kindness and the consideration to talk to me about it, and I was going to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you for your lovely note, by the way, too.
And I will say, the old Hawaiian saying, "Hana ho," I'm going to hold my comments for next week when we're going to do this again on Tuesday.
Oh, good. Can we put an ad out to see if we can get more people to come at the start of the meeting? Because I'm starting to expect this now, so.
We're going to do it all over again next week.
Yeah, we have more to say.
I'll call Michael Cop, make sure all, everything.
Yeah.
All right, well, I appreciate that very much, and with that, I think.
Wouldn't afford to see you Tuesday.
Well, since this isn't.
A little.
Since this isn't your last meeting, I'm going to move that we adjourn to the adjourned regular Planning Commission meeting, oh, excuse me, we're adjourning, we're adjourning to the adjourned.
Meeting.
Regular Planning Commission meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on July, on June 30th, 2015, in Council Chambers, located at City Hall 100 Avenue, Pasadena, San Clemente, California.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 6-0. Thank you, everybody, that was very.